And then two zoning appeal applicants. We have a very full agenda tonight, so I'd like to issue a few instructions or some guidelines. I would like the applicants, when they come up to, if we've already heard your application, we don't need to hear it again. We would like, if there's any significant changes, we'd like to know those. And as it relates to the technical review and staff review, all the items that are, will comply, we don't need you to go over those. We would like to hear from you on the items you don't believe you need to comply with, items that you are seeking a variance for, or any other new or outstanding items. As it relates to the board and to the public, if everyone could focus on keeping their comments very succinct and just limited to the items that we're discussing tonight, I think that would be very helpful in moving things along and trying to be very efficient. So, thank you. I appreciate that. And we have, as the first agenda item, minutes of the February 25th, 19, or PM, listen to me, 2015 meeting. Anyone want to make a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the February 25th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of the March 2nd, 2015 meeting?
Move, we approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of the March 10th, 2015 meeting?
Move, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of the March 26th, 2015 meeting?
Move, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have Villanova University at 800 East Lancaster Avenue, preliminary plan, construction of 1,135-bed student housing in six buildings with associated retail space under CICD use with phase-in construction.
Mr. Chairman, I'm recusing myself from this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Evening, Nick Canelli, representing Villanova. Last time we went through the letters, do you want us to go through the letters again, just like you stated beforehand? We will just hit on the things that we feel need discussion and everything else will comply?
Yeah, if you're going to comply with all our ordinances, we don't really need to hear that part.
We went through last time, you may not have been here, Steve.
I was not.
Okay, so should we go through those letters again, or do you just want to go through the new?
How about we go through the things which were not, will comply?
Yeah, okay, all right.
Because everything else you said you were going to do it, or whatever.
Right, I think we only have a couple of new letters, though, if you just want to go through those.
Right, for the Church Walk Bridge.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And then some updated stuff.
Yes, why don't we, we'll start with that.
Which?
Church Walk. Yeah, why don't we just start with Church Walk, and if you have any other questions, that may be the most expedited way to do it.
And I believe there's Gannett Fleming letter, and number two letter for Church Walk.
Please state your name.
Alex Tweedy with Navnole, the civil engineer for the project. I think what I envision, like Nick said, is we can review the comments specific to Church Walk that were issued in the new letters. And then last meeting, we went through point by point, but then I think there was a recommendation that we circle back at the end of the discussion and hit the highlights of the stuff that still needed discussion, so we'll just run through those high-level issues.
Yeah, again, if you can just keep it to the items that are new or that you do not intend or do not want to comply with.
Excuse me, Steve, I'm not sure that we, the letter that you're going to go over first is the engineer's letter on Church Walk.
Yeah, March 31st from Gannett Fleming on Church Walk.
I'm not sure we all have it in. It was set under separate cover.
I don't have the bridge in here, because it was submitted separately.
This one. Was it the same?
Did you have the color?
March 31st, it's the packet we got.
It's the 31st, yep. It's in the.
Yeah, I mean, that's coming here. No, it's like midway, midway.
Proceed, please.
So, in the Gannett Fleming letter, I reviewed some stuff with Roger this afternoon. There's only three items that we feel need to be discussed in under zoning. Roman numeral one. Number four relates to the 20-foot stepback along the rear property line. We believe this comment is related to two SEPTA parking stalls that are closer than 20 feet in the rear of that property within the CO zoning district. We have to provide a certain number of SEPTA parking stalls for the rework of the bridge. In the CO zoning district, there's actually a specific language for the buffer to only be 10 feet, not 20 feet. So, we believe this area is compliant for the remainder of the parking. We've provided the 20-foot buffer, but there's one isolated area right at the border of that.
And this affects two parking spaces, is that what you're saying?
Yes, two parking spots that are, there's a kink in the property line of five feet, and it brings it slightly under the 20-foot stepback.
Was that the area that was residential or commercial?
What was that?
Was this the area that was residential or commercial?
It's the CO zoning, it's the portion of the West Lancaster parking. So, we actually believe we comply with that. We'll provide all the remaining information in zoning that he asked for. And then in subdivision, comment number one, he has a comment about the, I know we spoke about this last time, with the width of the parking stalls being non-conforming from the existing, and we're not reworking the visitor lot at all, we're just saw-cutting the two ends of it and leaving the site in the middle. So, I think there's still some discussion as to whether or not a formal waiver is required, or if it's just an existing nonconformity, but we're intending to leave the visitor lot as it is, as it's striped, and just put a new driveway up into it.
This is number one.
Roman numeral two, number one, correct. And then similarly, we discussed last week this issue in the code with the difference between an entry drive at 25 feet and a drive aisle 22 feet. We're proposing a 22-foot entrance into that parking lot. It's a little five-foot-long entrance that feeds right into it.
Is that number two?
Yeah, number two. Roman numeral two, number two. Once again, you know, we believe that doesn't necessarily, it's internal driveway circulation, we don't believe it necessarily meets the definition of an entry drive. We'd prefer to keep it at 22 feet, so if a waiver needs to be requested there, then we'll request that waiver similar to the waiver we're requesting for the housing. Everything else in that letter is a will comply. And then for the two letter.
Well, we can talk through each letter.
Yeah, last time we went through each letter, I don't know what format we want to do.
Thought we'd just have her hear everything you have to say.
Okay. And then for the two letter, I believe there's only four comments.
April 6th.
Yeah, the April 1st.
The April 1st letter, which came via email to us, I believe?
Yeah.
Just give us a second, please.
What's the date on the two?
April 1st.
Everybody sit. Okay.
The zoning comments are will complies. For subdivision, unfortunately, I just saw this letter today in the packet, so I haven't had a chance to follow up with her too on it. On comment one, we'll work with him on the ADA pathways. We review the ADA parking spots as independent per use, so the ADA spot for Moriarty doesn't need access to the bridge. The bridge will have its own ADA spots and its own pathways. So, we'll work through the flow paths for that with him, but we believe we can, subdivision number one, second page, subdivision number one. But we'll work with him to clarify how the ADA parking spots address each use with each parking area, so we believe we can work through that with him. And then similarly, on comment number two, I think we've already spoke about the pedestrian access from the parking lots through the fence on the north side up to the campus, and previously he provided the parking plan for the ability to park on some lots on campus versus the use of the bridge for anyone that parks south of the roadway. So, we're proposing to maintain the driveway as is and not adding a separate walkway. And those are the only letters I know of related to Church Walk.
So, number two, is a will comply or no? That's a not.
Number two is, we are not proposing to add the separate walkway. But we don't believe that a pedestrian pathway is required there, as we discussed previously, because if anyone is needing to park close to the church, there's availability on campus as we previously presented. Anybody that parks on the south side of the campus can use the bridge to access the church.
I thought I saw somewhere in all the papers that come in on this, that there was a proposed sidewalk going to be added to the driveway up to the parking lot that services the church, or sort of services the church? Did I misread that?
No. There's some existing sidewalks on the east and west ends of campus, but there's no new sidewalks proposed as part of this plan.
We had had a conversation about this, because this number two, and you don't want to, basically, it's not a will comply, and the conversation I know we had last month was what we're going, if people choose to walk up the driveway, they're going to be walking along in the roadway where the cars are, it needs a sidewalk, and then there was, well, there's grass, they can walk on the grass on the side. I mean, that was the conversation. They don't want to put a sidewalk in, but there will be people walking up the entrance where the gate is to get to the church.
Well, I think.
And do we want them walking in the walkway? And I think that's what Steve is trying to say in his letter.
I think, though, what we discussed was, if you're coming from the east, you can come to the north side of the fence.
Can you, is the mouse active? Can you demonstrate?
We believe it's not necessary, because we don't believe you ever need to walk up that pathway. If you park in these visitor parking lots or in West Lancaster, you can walk across the bridge that takes you right to the church. If you're coming from the east, you can come onto campus and be on the north side of the bridge and walk directly to the church through campus. If you're coming from the west, there's a sidewalk that brings you into campus just past campus corner, and you can get to the church that way. So, we don't believe that there is the need for pedestrian traffic to come up this walkway. Everyone has the ability to use the bridge to get directly to the church.
Are you putting a crosswalk in the bridge area there, a pedestrian?
Well, the Church Walk is.
On the, across Lancaster Avenue?
The Church Walk driveway has a crosswalk as part of the PENDOT improvements for the traffic signal, so it's right in this location, and the bridge is.
Okay, so you're putting in a crosswalk for pedestrians that cross the street there?
But as part of the conditional use, we have to restrict pedestrian at-grade crossings. If you're going to campus, you're going on the bridge. The only reason this crosswalk is here is to get bus riders that are on the north side of Route 30 to the train station and back.
And how about those pedestrians that may take a public transportation to go to church? I think you need a sidewalk there. This was the scenario, is that if they get off at the crosswalk and cross to the north side of 30, they're not going to go, they're not going to walk back to the stairs and go up and over the crosswalk, they're going to cross at the crosswalk and walk up the driveway. This was the conversation we had last month about this. And I think you're encouraging that crossing at Lancaster Avenue on the roadway by having that crosswalk.
Well, the driveway's not open all the time. The reason the driveway is there is for special circumstances at the church, such as funerals and some weddings, so it's not open on a weekly basis.
I still think you should put a sidewalk there. We enforce sidewalks in small subdivisions.
Excuse me, is that an aesthetic or financial objection on your side, putting the sidewalk in?
We don't believe it's needed, and there's existing trees to preserve, and it's an existing driveway, and like was stated.
Where are the trees?
It lines the driveway on both sides. There's two large trees on the west side, and I believe three or four on the east side.
The sidewalk could wind around those couple trees there. I'm sure you could work it out.
This is going to be closed off, though. Like, the gate's going to be closed all the time. So, you really, regular pedestrians, like, if you're getting off the bus, you're not going up there, it's going to be locked and closed. It's only going to be open when.
But for special events, for example, weddings and funerals, I think if you're allowing a pedestrian walk there, you're encouraging people to cross on Lancaster Avenue. It doesn't have to be a huge wide sidewalk, but I think there should be a sidewalk there. And it could meander around a tree.
One of the things we also discussed is how, when you're coming down on that entrance of the little road there that accesses the church that we're talking about, where the mouse is, it, the way it comes out to meet Lancaster Avenue, the cars on Lancaster don't have an opportunity to react to someone showing up at the end of that driveway, so to encourage people to come down there, I've come down it before, and literally, the cars on Lancaster Avenue swerve. So, if we put a sidewalk there, and my concern would be that, I agree with what you're saying, but I also, from the other perspective, that it's going to have an opportunity for, to create a problem that we're trying to not create there.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but couldn't you route the sidewalk to a point where it wouldn't hit at that point? Like, have it come down on a flatter area there?
I just want to reiterate that part of the reason why we have this fencing here is, and we talked about this at the end of the meeting, two meetings ago, is that we're trying to prevent pedestrian crossings here, not encourage them, not incentivize them, and we're talking about a sidewalk at the end of a driveway that will be closed 90, 95% of the time. So, anything that would encourage pedestrians to come out there or seek to go in there would counteract all the measures we're taking to restrict at-grade pedestrian crossings. We've looked at the SEPTA figures, there's roughly one rider an hour that uses that stop, and so we know that we're going to have to put a crosswalk in per PENDOT, and we're doing that, but it's not to incentivize any more pedestrian crossings, it's actually to satisfy their requirements. We don't want to do that. So, again, the driveway is closed off, and will be closed off on a regular basis, will not be open, it's not going to be a regular throughway, and so a sidewalk really would be a sidewalk to nowhere in that regard.
How will it be closed off? What kind of a barrier?
It's already there.
It's just that yellow barrier that sits there?
No, we propose to include a fence there that's only opened at, when public safety opens it, for the needs of the church.
But a high enough fence that someone couldn't scale it easily?
Correct, similar in height to the fence that's running through that section now that stops there.
Okay, it wouldn't be like a turnstile type thing you have there now?
Correct.
All right.
As I understand it, it was the, was it the board of commissioners that asked you to put that fence along both sides of there to disturb to, or am I misunderstanding?
It was part of the conditional use process where we had to extend that fence, yes.
Objective was to prevent pedestrian crossings there?
Discourage.
All right.
So, but there's a sidewalk, well, you could still have pedestrian crossings, and the sidewalk goes the length of the campus, but to not offer points of entry that would incentivize them to cross there.
Anything else?
I had one other question, if I could. You said you weren't changing the visitors' parking lot for where the church people are parking now. How many spots are available around the church for services on a regular basis on a Sunday? For example, a lot of the people that attend church are older people and would have difficulty hiking the distance there. Are there enough spots over there for handicapped people that are in a close area so they can get to the church?
I didn't prepare that exhibit, I don't know if Villanova has those numbers off the top of their head, but the walkway is similar in nature to as it is today. Previously, if you parked here, you still had to climb stairs to get up on the Church Walk, and then climb a second set of stairs to get up to the landing. Basically, we're taking two staircases and consolidating them into one, but the walking experience is generally consistent with the way it is today. It's just one staircase to go on top of the bridge, and then you're right to the church.
You'll have the same number of parking spots after this is fully constructed, available to the parishioners?
Well, the campus parking total is the same, yes.
That's not my answer.
Kathy, yes, the question, we're not, this parking lot here.
Did you show us with the mouse?
Yeah. This parking lot here is the parking lot that's used for the church now, if you're going to park on campus.
Okay.
I mean, they also can park in the Tolentine Lot, but most of them park here or along the road here, between the parking lot and the church. That's where most of the people park if they're going to.
And how about on the south side of Lancaster? Is there going to be the same number of visitor parking spots available there when you're finished your construction?
There.
For a Sunday service?
Well, there's more.
Currently, there's more, obviously, because, remember, we're taking out that whole big surface parking lot, but we are putting in the West Lancaster, which would have how many spaces? 250 is what Alex says.
All right.
Over here.
Plus the 50, so 300.
Okay, thank you.
So, those are the comment letters we received on Church Walk. Relative to all the other reviews, we discussed them in detail on the 26th, and then on April 1st, we submitted a response letter with some additional exhibits to the township consultants, which basically were just restatements of what we presented during the previous planning commission meeting, and we really only have a few minor ones that we should, I guess, revisit, bring to your attention. On the Gannett Fleming, March 23rd review letter.
Hold a second, please.
Which letter?
March 23rd from Gannett Fleming? 24th, maybe?
24th.
24th. Oh, yeah, 24th.
Now, let's get, but you're in charge. Thanks.
All the zoning comments are will comply, so getting into subdivision land development, Roman numeral number two. With comment number two is discussion on the curb radii and the crosswalk configuration. We're meeting with PENDOT tomorrow night, and we'll comply with whatever PENDOT requires us to do with that corner. Number three highlights the waiver we were requesting for the 22-foot-wide drive aisles. As we discussed on the 26th, we're still seeking that waiver. Getting into Roman numeral number three for storm order management, as we discussed on the 26th, we're still, Roger, I know, is re-reviewing the code on the drawdown time for basins with the 96 hours on which volumes required. We believe it's only the infiltration volume, not the 100-year volume that was noted in his letter, so we await feedback from him.
Is it your intention to comply? I mean, pending the feedback, but.
I can add to that, that it is actually the 96 hours, it doesn't apply to the 100-year storm, so that comment goes away, they conform.
Perfect. So, we do comply. Getting into the West Lancaster parking and the subdivision land development portion, the only thing I'll restate that we stated before is comments two through five are all existing nonconformities for parking lots to the west at Stone and Farrell Hall that are outside the project limits, and they are existing nonconformities that aren't part of the project, and we're going to be preserving, as well as the visitor lot aisles that we already talked about in the previous review letter we went over. And then for Pike Field Garage, we have provided the additional information on height and the detailed garage plans to Roger, so we believe that's going to address all his comments. And similarly to the Performing Arts.
Excuse me, that was number one on the garage? Which comment on, under Pike Field Garage, which?
It was really one through six. He asked for detailed garage plans and building lengths and some parking stall dimension sizes, so those are all reflected on the detailed garage plans. And similarly to the Performing Arts Center, we provided the additional height information he requested, so we believe we comply with that. And that's all for Roger's letter. And then the Gilmore Letter from March 20th, I believe it is. Under general comments, comment number two spoke about the location of Church Walk Drive, and Amy and I have discussed that since that letter was issued, and she's comfortable with it remaining in the location shown on the plans as submitted.
Alex, I'm sorry, number one, under general comments, are you, a will comply, you're going to?
Yeah, we're going to give an easement for the public walkway.
You're going to give the easement.
Yeah, and Roger has a note about that on the visitor lot plan as well, there's some sidewalk in front of there, so.
Right, and Steve Gabriel had made a comment about the right-of-way.
Yeah, so we're going to give an easement all the way along that main pedestrian walkway. We believe comment two goes away when we, after we discuss this, we'll keep that in the same place. And the housing plan comments, comment number one speaks about taper length for the left turn coming into the garage, and though it is less than the typical standard, Amy and I discussed it, and we find the design to be acceptable as submitted, so that's going to remain as well. Everything else is a will comply. And then as far as the township planner review, in the submission package we presented, we gave additional elevation views of the buffer and screening details, so we believe those are going to address the concerns noted. And I don't, I don't believe there's anything else that needs to be discussed in that letter. We believe we've addressed or can address all the comments in the letters provided.
Okay, great. If there's any additional board questions before we go to staff?
Yeah, a couple of things. Well, so, just so you know, I brought the list of things that we all had talked about last, a week or two ago, that we still wanted to touch base about it. I mean, I brought that so you can look at that if you want. But a question came up for me, actually Regina mentioned it to me, and it brought up a really interesting point that I don't think any of us have discussed at all. All of the plans have said very clearly that the Performing Arts Center is planned, it's in the drawings, and it will be built as long as there's funding. But the two things that occurred to Regina and me last week as we were kind of talking about this is, if the Performing Arts Center is not built, the parking lot that's going to be there will remain, we presume. So, visually, Regina wanted to know, what's that going to look like until or, if or until Performing Arts Center's built? And we've seen no depictions of what that corner will look like without Pike Garage, I mean, without the Performing Arts Center, even though it's been very clearly stated by all of you that it will get built if the funds allow. So, what if the funds don't allow? What's that going to look like? And then from a traffic flow standpoint, what's that corner going to look like? You know, how's that parking lot that will be there both during the staging and in the event that the Arts Center's not built, how will that parking lot be integrated into the rest of the traffic flow plan? And I can't think of a time when any of us have discussed this, because every depiction has shown the Performing Arts Center getting built.
If you go to the Pike Garage Plan Set, it actually depicts the temporary condition on those detailed plans.
So, is the temporary, I'm saying the big campus, the master plan, so the temporary conditions and the flow of traffic in and out of that.
Is detailed on the Pike Garage Plan.
On the Pike Garage Plan, and that's what will remain? And what will happen to the turning lane that is, is that being built as part of the garage?
It's being built as part of the garage. It's required for the rear entry to the garage.
Okay, so, I see the north.
Let me find the sheet that's best depicts it here.
Thank you. I mean, this was just something she and I.
Pike Field Garage Plan Set, C 2.2, 7 of 34.
Seven of 34, thank you.
Could you spread it out on the table, please?
What was that?
Yeah, thanks.
I apologize, this is half-sized, so we might have to. I apologize, this is half-size, so we might have to zoom in slightly.
So if the garage never gets built, this is what will remain there?
Yeah, if the Performing Arts Center never gets built.
I'm sorry, I keep saying that, I apologize.
So, as you can see, there's still the right turn. All the highway occupancy PennDOT improvements are proposed. This is the driveway that's being built for access to the garage, so all the roadway improvements that generate the rights of access in this point will all be installed. So the right turn lane and this rear drive lane is here. Then, actually, this little line here is the limit of the existing parking lots that's preserved, and then we just have to basically pave up to the existing parking lot and do some temporary striping.
But temporary could end up being permanent if this doesn't get built. So I guess I just want to throw it out there to, you know, because it came up to the two of us, you know, are we okay with what that will look like? Are we okay with just, you know, the existing parking lot is not at all conforming to our current parking standards? And from what I can see in this drawing, you want to add some parking to it, which makes sense from the construction standpoint. Don't get me wrong, I understand that, but if that's what ends up remaining there, that's pretty, that's not the most attractive corner. You know, it's not in our zoning per se, but it's just something that I wanted to bring up for us to kind of talk about and realize we could end up for a very long time with that corner looking basically like that. You know, that's, I just wanted to bring that up, and it didn't, I didn't remember hearing any plans from your, from the applicant of what that will look like for the medium term to long term, when and until the Performing Arts Center gets built. And if it remains as pavement, what's the impact on the stormwater management? Because I believe with the construction of the Performing Arts Center, it would take into account some stormwater management of that building, but if this just stays a parking lot, what happens to the stormwater management for that lot in that event?
And Roger's asked that question, we're providing that detail to him.
I did read the note about the grass pavers and the special machine, so I mean, I knew I had seen that, so thank you for addressing that.
You're welcome. Any other board comment? Okay. Roger, if there's anything outstanding on your plate that we should discuss?
No, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time, but as Alex stated, we discussed a lot of this today, and he's going to comply, you know, as he explained.
Great.
I thought we were just talking about the review letters. I do have one other kind of big thing. I mentioned it to Roger before the meeting. In his review letter of Church Walk, it talks about that we have to, that the applicant needs to show slopes over 14% and 20%. Looking at the plan for Church Walk leading up to the proposed plaza expansion, it looks like they'll be disturbing steep slopes, and they're not dimensioned on the plans. So I just wanted to get an update on the status of that from staff.
Did you have an update for us? Go ahead.
I mean, Roger and I discussed that one as well today. We believe we can comply with his comment. There's a small portion directly adjacent to the sidewalk, right up against Route 30, but our bridge abomin is behind that, so there will be no disturbance to those steep slopes. And then at the plaza side, the plaza expansion is actually a driveway expansion. There's currently issues with the turning movements there with people having trouble getting around the piers and people getting around in front of the church, the traffic's heavy there. And actually driveway improvements, if no alternative is appropriate or permissible, you are allowed to build a driveway on steep slopes, so we believe that those improvements are allowable under the language of the code.
So that was the comment I wanted to hear from staff was whether or not, you know, is this a steep slope disturbance that would require going to zoning? It looked like steep slopes, it wasn't dimensioned and marked as that, but if it is, what's the, you know, what's the decision on whether or not they would have to go get a variance to disturb that? That was my question.
Have you had enough time to review that, Roger?
Yeah, but I haven't had time to sit down with Peter and Kevin to go over that. What will happen is we will make a determination, one way or the other, and if they have to go to zoning, they have to go to zoning. If not, they don't, and we'll make that determination.
Okay.
Yes. Susan, just to add to that, relief under zoning is not something that you or the Board of Commissioners can do. So obviously, if they don't comply with zoning, the only relief they can have is either change the plan so it does, or go to zoning hearing.
Oh, no, I understood that part. It was the, it was the, it's not dimensioned, is it actually steep slopes? And then Roger and I had a couple of minutes to talk before the meeting, and he said, I mean, basically told me that, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there. That was the other big thing that had hit me. At the end of the last meeting when I, we had talked about, I had a question about Church Walk, that was the question, was that area. So, yeah, we'll all just wait to hear what you guys decide. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to take some public comment now. If anyone would like to speak, please come up. State your name and address.
On, I guess it was March 26, we were given this packet, and, you know, I went over all the parking spaces. Right now, Church Lot is 81 spaces, the Big Lot is 1,289, and the Priority Monastery is 25. After this development, Church Lot will go from 81 to 41 spaces, and the Big Lot will go from 1,289 to 475 spaces. And the monastery, the priority, will stay at 25. So the Church Lot, there's a loss of 41 spaces, the Big Lot, there's a loss of 814 spaces, and that's, you know, somewhere a total loss of 1,225 spaces. The church capacity is around 550. So, and that, that's just, you know, for the parishioners, that doesn't include special events, which I am asking that all special events be also listed here, so we have an idea of where everybody's going to park. Participating at the masses on Sunday, there are a lot of older parishioners. I've talked to many of them, they have no clue, they can't visualize. A lot of them either get dropped off, or they have help coming up Church Walk. And when I tell them, you know, you may have to go to the parking garage, they go, where's that going to be? And when I point a quarter of a mile down the road, there, a lot of them said, well, we just won't be able to come here anymore. And that really will be a loss to the community, which is a very viable community, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rick Leonardi at 30 Aldwin Lane. Just two or three really quick points. The crosswalk that apparently PennDOT is mandating be maintained across Lancaster Avenue, we're hearing it discussed as though it were largely to service the needs of one septa bus rider who needs to get back across to get onto campus somehow. There's an entire cohort that maybe we should be considering, and that is the students in the dorms. There is exactly one outlet that sells pizza that's within walking distance of the campus, and that's Campus Corner, and that's down on the corner of 320 and Lancaster. Anybody, any student in these new dorm complexes who wants to go walk to get a pizza is going to be using this crosswalk. That's an enormous number of kids. They're not going to go up and over the bridge to the foot of the stair, to the foot of the church, and then diagonal back across the lot. They're going to cross this crosswalk to get to the sidewalk on the north side of Lancaster Avenue. We're talking hundreds of kids. The parking circle that was mentioned as being available as parishioner parking now is lined with signs now, at least three or four, saying monastery parking only. It disturbs me to keep hearing about the climb heights being essentially equivalent, that basically that either way, people on, parking on the south side of Lancaster have to climb up to get to the church, and it's a wash whether you use a bridge or whether you use the existing stairs that are there now. It's not true. The height differential, the vertical height gain is 438 feet if you're standing on the north curb of Lancaster now, you're going from 438 to 450 feet to get to the foot of the stairs to go to the church. It's a gain of 12 feet. The bridge, the person standing on that north curb, the equivalent spot, is going to be 20 feet over the head of that person standing on the north curb of Lancaster Avenue. The bridge height at that point is going to be 460 feet. So the person is going to, in essence, is going to have to have gotten somehow from 439 feet, the grade, to the bridge, which is 459 feet. It's a 20-foot climb. It's going up two flights of stairs. It's essentially climbing to your attic just to get over Lancaster Avenue. It's not a 12-foot gain, it's a 20-foot gain at least. It's quite a difference. And this is going to be every Sunday's experience for parishioner parking. It's going to be the experience for anybody coming to visit, admissions visitors, guests of the, guests of the college in general, staff, all the, the visiting or the commuting students, there's supposedly, the commuting student picture's not going to change, it's still going to be a thousand or so kids coming in, commuting to class every day. They're going to be, you know, apparently fighting for the 330 spots that are available in the West Lancaster parking lot, but they too are, having parked, are going to have to walk over, they're going to have to come up this bridge. 20-foot, two-story climb. All weathers. Just so you know, this is what you're approving.
Any other public comment? So I'd like to, I guess, if we could, Skip, have you taken some notes on what our short list is here? I have some.
I gave you.
Well, I think you should work from Susan's list, because I didn't make a list at that time. Susan, I'll let you, go ahead.
So when, I took notes when Skip was doing the meeting last week. They are asking for, basically the comments that we all kind of agreed we wanted to get back to is that the applicant is asking for the waiver of the 35-foot radius at the corner of South Ithan and Lancaster. That was the big comment, that we need to just decide how we want to go with that. And, no, no, I don't, I'm going to run through the list. And then the, I have to look back at the list to see what the waiver from number three is. Oh, this conversation that keeps going back and forth about the 22-foot driveway, staff and the applicant just disagree on whether or not they need a waiver. We, as a group, kind of generally agreed that we would grant it. Amy didn't have a problem with it. The issue of the 22 versus 25, so I think we're all kind of surprised that the applicant doesn't just request the waiver, but doesn't seem to want to do that. And we wanted to make sure that we got, you missed this conversation, but Villanova came back with, had had a stormwater management meeting with the neighbors and some other interested parties, and they came back with a very, a stormwater management plan that is kind of above and beyond what our ordinance is, and they're looking to do some infiltration as well as water management. Regina asked a bunch of very technical questions last month. We just want to make sure we get ordinance language in there, I mean, a recommendation language in there that reflects that intention that everybody agreed on in the room. Most everything else was a, the applicant will work it out, or it was a will comply. And that was, those were the basic things. The other big thing that we discussed, Steve, was the neighbors and PennDOT are having a meeting tomorrow night about traffic, solely traffic. PennDOT, a local representative, the neighbors, Villanova, and I think some township staff, but I'm not positive staff's coming. In any event, kind of the thing we discussed, and I think we still need to discuss, is what we want to do about a recommendation one way or the other, when the big question that's out there is, where's PennDOT going to land about the right-hand turn lane that staff would like leading into South Ithan Avenue? And other considerations about traffic that may, that may come up tomorrow night? I mean, largely, we don't get to decide about them, but are there things that will come from that meeting that would, you know, for instance, inform our vote one way or the other about the waiver request that they're asking for at the corner?
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, so what Mrs. Stern is talking about, the Friends to Preserve Radnor requested a meeting with PennDOT, and they asked the Township to facilitate that meeting, which we did. The applicant Villanova will also be there, myself and Mrs. Kaminski will be there. But what I would like to requestfully recommend and suggest is, there may be no change, a change, some change as an outcome from that meeting. It's strictly a traffic meeting with PennDOT. When Mrs. Kaminski and I met with PennDOT last month, really the final issue was the right-hand turn lane. PennDOT, at our request, had Villanova do some modeling. I don't know if that's ready, and really, it's not germane to this conversation, because what I was going to say is, if this commission makes a recommendation, an approval with conditions, a denial, whatever that recommendation will be, may be, during the BOC caucus process, we can work out any of the details in Roger Phillips' letter, anything that comes from PennDOT, because that's their jurisdiction. So whatever PennDOT comes up with, Villanova's really going to have to comply with. So I don't want to let tomorrow night's meeting cloud what this commission is doing tonight, because there's a whole nother process to go through.
I have a comment that relates to your comment. If we say or take up a particular, you know, one issue, this issue, and say, among, we want to bring to the attention of PennDOT, that the commission feels that the deepest or broadest, or whatever, however you want to describe it, possible change to the radius would be desirable? And if staff attends, would staff say to PennDOT and the neighbors that are there that the Planning Commission recommended this particularly and in specific? Because I would think that PennDOT ought to be slightly more responsive than not, if not only the Planning Commission, but the neighbors who attend want that.
Well, obviously, the neighbors will bring forth all their concerns. I will bring, if this commission has anything very specific, a point or two, a couple bullet items, I will gladly bring that up to PennDOT during the period of time that I'm able to comment.
See, it just strikes me that it's probably the biggest issue left. Well, the parking for the church is a big issue, I think, too, but we'll get to that when we wrap up our comments. But it seems to me if you, it's one thing for you to say, the Planning Commission gave the preliminary plan approval or disapproval with conditions. It's another thing to say, they addressed this one issue, and it's important that, you know, we bring this to your attention, PennDOT, that this is critical.
And I will do so. And I think we need to remember, so the Township, some of us at staff were pushing for the right-hand turn lane. A viable and alternative idea was brought forth by the applicant in putting the turn lane in front of the Performing Arts Center. We just asked PennDOT to have the applicant just go one more step, do some modeling to make sure that everything works the way it should, and what happens with or without the turn lane. So I will gladly bring to PennDOT any specific comments this commission has. I will be there tomorrow night.
Amy, my one question that I keep forgetting to ask, and I apologize, is that the issue of the radii request at the corner, it's, I mean, it will all change if there turns out to be a right-hand turn lane there. The issue of how sharp that corner is now would change if there's a right-hand turn lane, correct?
No, you'd still need a turn radii for that movement.
No, I'm saying, but in their design of a right-hand turn lane, would that impact the, the, right now, one of the big concerns about not supporting that particular waiver is, and Liz has said it many times, is how much the traffic has to slow down to take that very sharp turn onto South Ithan. If there's a right-hand turn lane there, some of that traffic that slows down to take the right will be getting into a right-hand turn lane. So if the radii at that corner were to remain smaller in a newly configured fashion, it would be less of an impact, I would think, but perhaps not? That, that's what I'm trying to ask you is.
Less of an impact on the through movement?
The through movement, correct.
Meaning you'd be, correct, you'd be moving out of traffic sooner.
Right.
So it would allow the through movement to occur more.
Right, okay, that's what I thought. So the, the issue of the radii is even more critical if we don't get the right-hand turn lane?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. That's...
Yeah, I think, as the board, I think we need to, you know, to bring this to a vote. So I think I like Steve's recommendation, and if there is issues that come up with traffic, and the Board of Commissioners also gets another look at this as well. So if there's any big surprises or big concerns, then they can definitely kick that back to us for another look.
We had a couple of the comments come up last time that were, I have written down, one of them was making sure that Owen Triangle remained green space, that that stayed as, that understanding stood. And another topic that came up that, I'm not sure if we're going to readdress it or not, but looking at alternate locations for the parking to decrease the number of floors or decrease the parking at the South Ithan location, so we were thinking of putting it at the St. Augustine instead. That was another hot topic discussed. Where do we land with those?
To clarify, I think what you're saying is that they'd have to change the design of St. Augustine, and one of the issues was that they didn't want to go for zoning variance for height. And that the design of the garage right now was such that there's not internal connections between the floors, and the more you add to an existing difficult design, it gets, that was their comment. So I don't know how we want to handle that, other than to say, tear it down and build a new one, but that seems kind of asking a lot.
So are we going to keep that, is the idea to keep that as a separate issue and just deal with the ones that are on our...
It could be, it could be a recommendation. It doesn't have to necessarily be a condition, I would think.
Right.
But that doesn't have very much teeth, either.
No, I understand.
I think part of the issue is, the one at St. Augustine Garage, that's structural concrete, is it not? Okay, and so putting a second tier on top of those columns, I'm an engineer by trade, although it's electrical, it would seem to me that that would be very difficult to do. You'd actually have to tear it down and rebuild. As opposed to the one that's at the corner of the train tracks in North Ithan Avenue, that's structural steel, and you could put on...
I don't want to talk, address the structural issues of those garages, I want to talk philosophically about why we have the parking the way we do. We have spread out the parking as this project has gone on. We started with an 1,800-car parking structure on Pike Lot, reduced it by about a third to two levels, created the West Campus Surface Lot, added, originally we were going to add a level to each of the HSB and SAC parking garages, and figured it would be more efficient, and we'd get more spots if we did two levels at the SAC garage. That was all done in response to feedback from this body, the Board of Commissioners, and the residents. The parking that we have, this plan now, is what we're able to accomplish. We're not in a position to offer the ability to put more spots in the center of campus. We don't necessarily agree that that's an effective use of those spots. I know some contention has been, that's a better place to put student cars, but that's where the students are going to be on a daily basis, and if we put the student cars there, they have easier access to them. We believe where that parking and warehousing is going to occur now in the new structure is the most effective and most efficient thing possible. The additional two levels, which the parking structure is designed to accommodate, our architect can speak to that a little more detail if he needs to, that's what we're able to do, and we feel like we have a really good plan to maximize those two levels there. But we're really not in a position to add more central parking.
Someone mentioned that, that we are doing away with like 1,200 parking spaces.
We are not.
But you, we're adding, we're doing away with them in the main lot, but we're moving them down west behind the house, the buildings that used to be houses over there, and we're, we're putting them in Pike Garage and all that.
Well, again, we're spreading it around, so we're taking what is a very centralized, focused area of parking and spreading it throughout campus. We'll have the parking garage that we're building, we'll have the West Campus Surface Lot that we're building, and then the two levels on SAC. The actual parking spots remain the same. And while we're talking about that, I just want to reiterate that the church parking remains the same. The same amount of spots that are available near the church today will be available in the future. It's been misrepresented that we're adversely affecting that. As a matter of fact, we've worked very closely with the parish to ensure that this plan that we've come up with is acceptable to the parish. The parish priest signed a statement to that regard. I handed that, I don't have the copy this time, I handed it to Ms. Bailey two meetings ago, as part of our conditional use packet. They've planned this project with us hand in hand, and their concerns are our concerns. And so we don't take that lightly, and we are accommodating the parish in the future as we are today.
I think the comment from the public earlier though about church parking was that some of the existing gigantic lot services the parish as parking. And that it isn't fully replaced by the new parking to the south side.
Well, we're taking away some parking in that, in that main parking lot, we're also adding the West Lancaster Surface Lot, so we're adding some surface parking over there.
I guess the demographics are, I don't know what a capacity congregation needs in terms of parking, but it sounded like, from the public comment, that there isn't enough on that side of Lancaster, and that the other side is slightly reduced, whether or not, that's so slight that that's not a big thing, but losing maybe 100 or 200 spaces out of the gigantic Pike Lot might be...
Neither the parish nor the university thinks that's true, that we have the parking, we have the parking that we need to satisfy the needs of the parish.
What's the plan to remove snow and ice from the, from the bridge? And I know that sounds kind of off the, whatever, but I'm thinking about access to the bridge for snow removal, ice, you know, we don't want stuff just dropping off the sides of the bridge. I've seen, I think, only one picture of what the bridge is supposed to look like. Is that, is all that snow going to stay up there? Is it going to drip off the edge and hit cars as it goes underneath? You know, I just had a hard time.
Yeah, that's a question I can't answer, so I'll let John or Alex answer that.
John Clover, architect. We have been taking snow removal into consideration with the design of the bridge as well, and while it has solid sides, when you get past the bridge onto the housing side, it has more of a, an open railing system, and part of that railing will be removable to allow snow to be pushed off onto the Villanova property. And the small, pardon me, the small, like, snow removal vehicles, they can gain access to the bridge directly off of the church plaza. So they have that full, the full run of the bridge for snow removal, and the ability to push it either up to the plaza and off the campus side or onto the housing side. So no, that's not going to, it's not like the bridge is going to be inaccessible during, you know, after a snow or anything like that. Snow removal will happen.
Any other board comments? Susan, do you feel like you've got enough notes?
I was writing up a recommendation with...
Yes, that's what I was going for.
Yeah, that's what I was working on.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. I just have to finish my last little sentence. It's been a long process, and I know that there are always going to be people who are going to be, you know, disappointed this is happening, but, you know, I think, my own personal feeling is that our best course of action is to move forward with a recommendation to the board and, and list to them the things that we feel are most important still get addressed. And that's my own personal feeling about it.
Susan, one more comment, just, could we leave the PennDOT recommendations to Steve out of that? Okay, well, that's a separate matter.
It's not even in there. So my, my motion is that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plan subject to the following conditions. A denial of the waiver request for 255-27H to permit a 25-foot radius curb on the southwest corner of Ithan Avenue and Lancaster Avenue. That the applicant meet all outstanding staff comments and review letters or request waivers from comments. That the applicant install an enhanced stormwater management plan as detailed to staff and neighbors and to the Planning Commission at its March 26th meeting. This enhanced stormwater management plan is to include infiltration and improved water quality as outlined at the March 26th meeting. And that the applicant seek any and all easements necessary for the construction, maintenance, repair, and access to the pedestrian bridge. Sue, I have this written down for you. So that's my motion.
So, one question I have on the motion. So this, staff thinks it's needs, they need 25-foot for the, for the driveway, and they're looking for...
So staff's comments were, they believe that it, that Roger had written out that the ordinance, that the ordinance, Saldor says 25 feet. Staff and applicant disagree on whether or not it's only a driveway, do they have to have 25? And Roger's comment was either provide 25 or seek a waiver. And all I'm saying is, the applicant, and there's a whole host of other will complies, the applicants, there were a lot of will complies. My only comment was that the applicant either will comply or seek the waivers that the staff says they need to seek.
Can, but if we're going to grant the waiver, can...
Well, I, yeah, but can we grant a waiver that hasn't been requested? That's kind of a technicality, I know.
Susan, you may recall, we asked, we said we don't agree, but anyway, we would ask for a waiver and/or, it was saying we didn't necessarily agree with the interpretation.
So you're going to go ahead and, okay, all right, that's fine.
Yeah, we can ask for a waiver, it's not, yeah.
All right, good.
I thought that we, I thought we stated that.
I may have missed that, but anyway, all right, so I can, do you want me to reread it? Okay. Sure. The Planning Commission recommends...
Susan, before you reread something, just, there, at an earlier meeting, there was a discussion regarding buffering between the neighbors to the east and the Performing Arts Center and the Pike Garage, and I think there were assurances that additional buffering would be provided.
I thought that was in Steve Gabriel's letter, and there was a response letter where the applicant said that they would work with the neighbors on barley cone.
We would comply with whatever the code requires.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, there was, I read that comment today. And they also had dealt with the issue of the snow on the grass pavers that they're using for emergency access near the Performing Arts Center. That was something we talked about last month, but I did see that in the letter, yeah, I thought so. Okay, the Planning Commission recommends approval of the preliminary plan with the following conditions. A denial of the waiver request for 255-27H to permit a 25-foot radius curb on the southwest corner of Ithan Avenue and Lancaster Avenue. That's their request as written, and we recommend denial of it. No, that's the corner, that's the southwest corner, that's something different. That the applicant meet all outstanding staff comments and review letters. That the applicant install an enhanced stormwater management plan as detailed to staff and the public and to the Planning Commission at its March 26th meeting. This enhanced stormwater management plan is to include infiltration and improved water quality as outlined at the March 26th meeting. And that the applicant seek any and all easements necessary for the construction, maintenance, repair, and access to the pedestrian bridge. That's the end of my motion.
What about that sidewalk?
Which sidewalk?
I guess there's, that the, I guess our sta...
The one in the public right of way?
No, the...
The driveway, to the parking.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, we have to decide, we can add that, that was kind of the beginning of the motion. We didn't have a discussion about that sidewalk.
Right.
We don't normally tell people walk in the street or walk in the driveway, we don't normally. I mean, imagine how many applications we're going to have of, oh, can we just not have a sidewalk? Can we just have people walk in the street in a cul-de-sac because there's not that much traffic? I mean, it's, it's, the Board of Commissioners is going to do whatever they want with that one, but...
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine to leave it out, I just thought I, we just... Is there any other additions or comments to that motion?
I feel we should address the right-hand turn lane onto Ithan, the...
I thought we were going to give a recommendation, I'm, I was suggesting...
Steve asked me to leave out the PennDOT part, that's why I left it out.
Because this is, this is a motion for the record, the other is going to be just a request, a comment.
No, I think the radius should be on the record.
I think the radius is on the record, it's the turning lane.
Well, last time we were here, it was, it was expressed that if they, if PennDOT understood our concern, that it would be considered more, and that we should make a point to let them know our concern, and that we can always, now, how was it said, we can always add to or...
Well, I would do as you have done, and make your motion the motion for approval with the conditions. If you wish me, as a staff member, to take your concerns to PennDOT tomorrow night, I will gladly do so. That would be something separate, it'll be in the minutes, Sue will give me that, and I will go forth with that. But I would not, since you have no purview over PennDOT, nor do we, and the applicant will have to comply with PennDOT's decision, understand your concern in wishing to let them know what is on your mind and what concerns you. But I will bring that to them, and it's not part of this appro, it should not be part of this approval process. So when you're done, give me your bullet points, Sue will take them down, I will take them verbatim to the meeting tomorrow night, and if I'm allowed to speak, I'll make sure I bring that up.
But Ithan is not a state road, is it?
But the right-hand turn lane is on Route 30, and that is the purview of PennDOT.
But the radius.
Right, but that's already in the, that's already in the motion.
That is?
That's one of the first points of the motion.
I thought you were referring to another driveway. There are not that radius.
Any other board comments before we make a formal motion?
I thought that was a formal motion, which I'll, which I will about the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Steve, can I make another quick motion? That Steve Norsini bring the following memo to PennDOT. The Planning Commission strongly supports staff and neighbors' recommendation of a right-turn lane at the southwest corner of Lancaster Avenue, Lancaster and Ithan Avenues.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
So, there you go.
Well, I'll get the copy from you, Mrs. Stern.
And the next applicant we have, please bear with me. All right, we've had a request for a three-minute recess, so anybody that needs to use the restroom or whatever, please feel free. or whatever, please feel free. If everyone could take their seats, I'd like to get started. Okay, if the next applicant is here, who is Biomed, which is 2014D02, Biomed, being in more reality. It's preliminary plan for demolition of existing office and research buildings and redevelopment of property with proposed office buildings and associated parking at 145 King of Pressure Road. And just in case not everyone was here, made a request, since we have a full agenda, just to, just, if there's any major changes to your proposal, that's fine, but we don't need a re-presentation. And as we go through comments, if we would just limit those to, if it's a will comply, we don't need to bring those up, we'll just limit ourselves to the items that you disagree with or that you would need a waiver on.
You got it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You've met me before, my name's George Kreschulik, from Duane Morris, I'm co-counsel with Nick Canelia. And I'd like to, again, just introduce the rest of the team that's here. We have Mike Devine, who's the Senior Director of Leasing and Development for Biomed. We have Ross Cole, our architect and planner from BAM. We have Alex Tweedy, civil engineer from Naive Newell. We have John Witchner, our traffic engineer from McMahon. Let me just briefly say, the, we do have some minor edits to our plan, which we'll show you. But just as you've seen me before, you've seen this exact plan before, as I indicated, we have some, some minor edits, the organization of the building groups, the circulation, the pedestrian main street slightly changed, we'll show you that. Last time we were here, you recommended a denial specifically on the issue of the parking structure. Your solicitor has now interpreted that section of your code to say that we've complied with that section. The, pardon me?
Yes, we actually got a memo to that effect from our solicitor, yeah, last week, so it was with your package, if you missed it.
You know, to jump in to be precise, we, it's not so much that you comply, as it is that perhaps our ordinance is not as precise. That the, the intent of the ordinance was to not trade surface parking for more buildings on top by having a parking structure, but the ambiguity of the ordinance is against us. That's what I read in the two different, the letters from Duane and the, our sta, I mean, John Rice's letter, so...
It's probably not worth arguing too much about, but I would respectfully slightly disagree with you. That is one of the aspects of what he suggested in the memo. But I think what we will show you is we've now eliminated some of the allowable parking, we showed him how we've done that, and that's what I think convinced him to be able to say, we do meet that section of the code, not ju, and in addition, any benefit would be given to the applicant, which is...
Yeah, but that was, that was in litigation, and if, if there had to be litigation, ambiguity would be, would have, the burden would be higher on the township than you, we'd have to prove that it wasn't ambiguous.
Right, that's why I wouldn't, again, I'm not here to argue the case, we understa...
Why would you do one message?
I didn't plan to spend it, much time on that. Anyway, the memo says what it says, we all read it. And so we would say that as we're showing you these minor edits, we've now complied with all the issues that have been raised by the, the boards and by the professionals. So what we'll show you tonight will be the, the minor edits that I mentioned. We'll show you the, a little bit more about transportation improvements, because that's changed. And then we'll do that quick review of the letter responses, and Alex will handle that. So I'll turn it over at this point to Ross, to talk a little bit more about those minor edits, and it's all yours.
Thank you, Ross Cole, BAM Architecture Studio. And what I'd like to just do is give you a quick overview of what it is that we've edited on the plan. You can see in front of you and on the screen, some of what I'm talking about, is, the first thing that we did was, in order to address some of the comments that we had received, is we removed one of the groups of buildings, so that you'll see now, and I think you may have seen it on the plan in front of you, that there's three groups of buildings now. What we've done is we've massaged some of the dimensions, and in doing that, the reason for it was to be able to create a little bit more sense of open space between the buildings, and be able to generally address a couple of other things that I'll show you in the plan in just a second. And that includes reducing some of the square footage. And in doing that, these edits are resulting in traffic neutrality, which John Witchner will discuss that in just a few minutes. And then also, John, we'll talk about some numerous traffic improvements that are being proposed adjacent to the site, as well as in the general vicinity. We've also eliminated allowable surface parking area, we can talk a little bit about that and what, where those areas are. We've increased the landscape area, and also, we've added to the trail network. You may recall that we had shown the trail network on the previous plan, we've actually added a bit more to that trail network. And then we, in addition, we've added a sidewalk along King of Pressure Road on the east side of the road. So with that, I'll show you the plan, and I'll use this pointer just to be able to go through a few of the things about the site that I wanted to point out. The first is that, this is a plan that has not really changed much. You can see that we've got the entrances at the south and the north, the circulation for the vehicular aspects of it is consistent with everything that you have seen. We've got the same locations for where you have the entry points and exit points for the subsurface parking. The pedestrian main street, which we think is a very important feature for the site, has been maintained throughout. What we have done is we've eliminated surface parking back in this area, over in here, and in doing that, we've been able to create more green space, create wider dimensions between the buildings over in these areas. We've also taken these two buildings and brought them closer to this front parking area. And the reason for that is to address one of the comments that was received from the Fire Commissioner in terms of concern that they had about setting the building back too far from where the paved area is, we brought that forward. And then, as I mentioned, we've just massaged some of the buildings to be able to eliminate that one grouping, and then distribute some of that square footage between these other buildings that you're seeing on the site over here. The look and the feel of the environment has not changed, we're still really focused on something that has a very strong campus feel to it. This is a rendering that you had seen previously, and really, this is not changing, other than the fact that this will get a bit wider between the buildings over here. We're intending to take the same approach to it, to make it a, really, a very campus-like feel to it, where people can feel just as comfortable outdoors as indoors, and avoid that sense of a sea of asphalt in the environment. And then this is the trail plan, to be able to show you some of the things that we've added to it. You can see that we've got the SEPTA station up over here, the bus station, or the bus stop over here, I should say. And there's a few things that we've done, which is that we've added this additional sidewalk along over here for King of Pressure Road. We've also connected to the trail over in this area, and in doing that, we think that some of these items also fit nicely with the Greenways Plan that's been ongoing in, as an effort in the town for several years. And those are really the key things that we've done with it. Oh, in addition to one other thing, I apologize, and it was one more thing that I was forgetting to mention, was we also added additional sidewalk area over here, going up to the SEPTA stop from where the bus stop is over in this area. And then, of course, we've got the sidewalk that leads to the other train stop that's just up the street. So with that, those, that's really the edits that we've made to the plan. I'll ask John Witchner to come up and talk to you about some of the traffic aspects of it.
Thanks, Ross. John Witchner with McMahon Associates. The plan before you hear, you've, you've seen this plan, you've seen the access points, you've seen King of Pressure Road. Just to kind of quickly reiterate some of the aspects of this plan, A, we have a proposed driveway in the southern portion of the site, in this area, where we anticipate about 75% of the traffic to come to and from, certainly desiring to use Lancaster Avenue, and eventually east and west on Lancaster Avenue and the Blue Route. We have a driveway on the northern end of the site, which is the existing SEPTA access to the back in this location. And then along King of Pressure Road, we have a, a widening of King of Pressure Road to create a four-lane cross-section in that area. That's, that's based upon the ordinance requirement for, for King of Pressure Road. So with, with this, as Ross had mentioned, we have a reduced square footage, a reduced density on this particular plan. And we really kind of want to summarize some of these transportation benefits for, for this, this particular plan. I'll get to later regarding a traffic-neutral plan as compared to the 2009-approved plan. We have a new significant list of transportation improvements in the general area for the public roadway network, to accommodate some existing deficiencies, and also certainly to accommodate the future tenants of the site. A significant reduction in travel times along, at the intersection of Lancaster Avenue and King of Pressure Road, we are focusing a lot of our improvements at that particular intersection, as I mentioned in the slide before, about 75% of our traffic desires to use that intersection, eventually go east and west of Lancaster Avenue and also the Blue Route. We, we have proposed signals along Lancaster, I'm sorry, along King of Pressure Road, one being at Raider Road at the high school, will certainly improve safety for students and other visitors entering and exiting that driveway on King of Pressure Road. And as Ross had discussed in a previous slide, a number of additional trails to start to match up and to start to make some connections on specific elements in the Greenways Trail Plan for the township. So this slide here, it's certainly a busy slide, but it really goes to show the lengthy list of transportation-related improvements in this area. You know, we're kind of debating whether or not to put this up on an aerial, or to kind of, you know, list it in word format, but I really want to make sure that we get, you know, talk about some of these improvements. At the intersection of Lancaster Avenue and King of Pressure Road, we're providing a second southbound right-turn lane, as you head southbound King of Pressure Road at Lancaster, Lancaster Avenue, right along the, the schools, the school site front is there. What that does is it starts to accommodate that lengthy vehicle stacking that's seen on southbound King of Pressure Road today, does back up in many instances today. We're trying to basically double the capacity for that right-turn movement on King of Pressure Road. Staying at Lancaster Avenue and King of Pressure Road, as you come off of the 476 off-ramp from northbound 476, right now you have two left-turn lanes to head westbound on Lancaster Avenue, you have one through lane onto King of Pressure Road, and then one right-turn lane. Based upon the volumes that we're seeing out there today and in the future, we're looking to take that, that separate right-turn lane and allow a shared through-right movement. King of Pressure Road has two receiving lanes in that area, and what we've seen is some, some queues on that off-ramp that could potentially back up onto the main line of 476. We want to improve that queue, and that was, that was another improvement that was requested in previous township review letters. At the southern driveway, as I, as I mentioned, the southern driveway there on King of Pressure Road, we are adding a northbound right-turn lane, which is basically a right-turn lane into, into the access there. The traffic signal at the high school, at Raider Road on King of Pressure Road, I had mentioned, kind of a new, new improvement or a series of improvements that, that we're starting to look at more regionally, and that PennDOT is looking at more regionally, is a, a traffic adaptive signal system at nine different intersections that I'll, I'll show on the next slide. But the King of Pressure Road quarter, the Radnor Chester Road quarter and Lancaster Avenue quarter, kind of all operate separately. And this traffic adaptive signal system is the latest technology that, that PennDOT has employed in over 150 signals in the southeast PA region, and it really allows for increased mobility and increased traffic flow. And now what we can do is tie all these different quarters together. I know that the township is pursuing some grants at other intersections along Lancaster Avenue quarter, and so this is, I think this is something that the township has seen in, in the past to, to show some improvements along some of the busiest quarters in the township, including these three. As Ross had alluded to before, new sidewalk on, jumping to number seven, new sidewalk on King of Pressure Road, that's part of Segment 12A of the Greenways Trail Plan. Sidewalk on the southern side of the SEPTA access driveway, that's complimentary or, or working with Segment 12B from the Greenways Trail Plan, and then also the trail extension under the Blue Route to get to Route 30, again, another segment of, of the Greenways Trail Plan.
Did you just mention that you worked with staff to come up with all this?
Sure. The, as I mentioned before, this is a significant list of improvements that we really haven't brought to the township on past, on past plans. And I think that we've, we've met with township staff and the township's consultants to really work through a lot of these different improvements, and many of these have shown up on previous review letters and requests for these specific improvements. We've worked extensively with both Steve and Amy to, to really fill out this list of improvements, and certainly don't want to speak to them, speak for them, but I, I think we're, as a team, as township staff, we are in agreement that these are certainly a, a major benefit to the public roadway system here. Getting to, to the traffic adaptive signals, this is merely an aerial in terms of tying all these different nine intersections, existing signalized intersections together, in addition to the, the two proposed signals along King of Pressure Road. Again, these systems are all working separately right now, and this is an opportunity to let this entire grid, or call it web, web of roadway here to, to work together. Some of the technical aspects of the traffic adaptive signals, as, again, PennDOT has over 150 signals using this technology in southeast PA, it's actually growing on a monthly basis, all the major quarters in the area, Route 202, Route 100, the 202 Parkway in Montgomery Bucks County, 202 through King of Pressure Upper Marion Township areas, are all employing this latest technology for these major quarters to improve the flow of traffic. These, these three quarters, Lancaster Avenue, King of Pressure Road, and Radnor Chester Road, these really are key quarters and good candidates for this type of technology. There's a number of different signals in, in these, each of these systems, and certainly the, the nine intersections that we're able to, to add on to this traffic adaptive system, you know, will allow these three systems to work together. Based upon information that we received from PennDOT, PennDOT has provided to us a number of different studies, both in Pennsylvania and from other DOTs, that show an improved travel time along these major quarters between 38 and 62%. And again, these are not theoretical improvements, these are post-implementation And again, these are not theoretical improvements, these are post-implementation improvements, that they've gone back six months and 12 months after this signal technology was implemented, and seen at least a 38% increase in travel times, or improvement in travel times up to about 62%. We talked in the beginning about a traffic-neutral plan. One of the things that we did, going, starting to compare the 2009-approved plan versus the recent plan here that we have before you, 475,000 square feet of office, taking into account the methodology that we need to abide by, IT standards, a transit reduction that we've talked about a lot in the past, and that we've kind of settled on a 7% transit capture, which is the highest that township staff would start to allow us to take, even though we think it's going to be, we think that's a modest number, we think it is going to be a little bit more than 7%. But at the end of the day, during the morning peak hour, our site is looking to generate approximately five new trips in the morning peak hour versus the 2009-approved plan, and five less trips in the afternoon peak hour. And a couple of things to note with this traffic-neutral plan. In 2009, there were no roadway improvements associated with that plan. In 2015, there is a list of all the roadway improvements that we just presented in the previous slide, and there's also the traffic adaptive signal technology, which, I guess in all fairness, those improvements are typically modeled in a post-implementation perspective. So we were not even able to account or even model the benefits of that system in the Traffic Impact Study exercise that we had to do with the township. So, you know, the traffic impact study shows that these intersections will work, and then on top of that, we're now able to employ the traffic adaptive system here. So, again, 2009, no roadway improvements. 2015, a whole list of roadway improvements for the same traffic-neutral plan. Getting down to specific intersections, a number of physical roadway improvements at Lancaster Avenue and King of Prussia Road. It improves travel times, traffic signal Raider Road for the high school to improve safety. The two proposed signals along King of Prussia Road will now be able to be synchronized together to work in tandem with each other, and improve certainly the queues that are seen on King of Prussia Road, and can work with the signal spacing that we've seen based upon the analysis. And then, again, the traffic signal technology improvements, improve travel time by at least 38%, based upon the six studies that we've received from PennDOT. And really, just to kind of sum everything up, you know, basically how we started. Again, this is a traffic-neutral plan based upon a comparison to the 2009-approved plan that had no roadway improvements. We now have a significant list of transportation-related improvements to the public roadway network, reduction in travel times at some of the key intersections, specifically Lancaster Avenue and King of Prussia Road, which we, you know, which I think we all can agree that tends to be a pinch point in this quarter here. Proposed signals at the high school, improve safety for entering and exiting vehicles. And then, although not necessarily vehicular traffic, the significant upgrades and additions to the Greenways Trail Plan that we can control boost, not only sidewalk along the site frontage, but also connections to the other aspects of the trail, including the trail underneath the Blue Route to get over to Route 30. I do want to let Alex talk a little bit about some other plan aspects, and then I believe we'll be going through the review letters to touch on the points that Stephen made about items that we wanted to discuss.
Yeah, I think Ross and Alex Tweedy with Naveen Noel, the civil engineer for the applicant. Ross and John went over the edits to the plan. I just wanted to go through the review letters we received. In general, it will comply with all comments. We just want to highlight a couple items to bring to your consideration. The first thing to note is, we just wanted to run through the list of waivers that are being requested as part of this plan.
Can you give us the letter that you're going to reference?
Yeah, they're noted on, actually, both Roger and Amy's letter, but the March 31st Gauntlet Fleming letter is probably the best one. Page two. At the top of page two. Yes. At the very top of the second-page list, the five waivers that are being requested. The first waiver is to permit the use of the IT chip generation rates instead of the rates that are noted in the Radnor Code, which is a typical waiver that Amy supports. The second waiver being requested, we're requesting, as part of the meetings we were having with staff and the requests that we've heard from the planning commission about the Greenway Trail Plan, in order to get the sidewalk along King of Prussia Road that's being requested, and save the trees that we worked with the Shade Tree Commission to save, we're requesting a waiver to go to a 44-foot wide cartway on King of Prussia Road. The code is 48 feet, so it's the difference between 12-foot lanes and 11-foot lanes. And we've discussed that waiver with Amy, and we believe she supports that waiver. The third waiver is to permit an intersection which is not a 90-degree alignment. That's up at this intersection of the SEPTA driveway. There's limited traffic going towards the SEPTA bus stop, and it's just the wording of the code that requires a waiver be requested. I believe we've worked through the traffic flow with Amy, and she's comfortable with the design. We just need to formally ask for a waiver because of the language of the code. The fourth waiver is to allow us to use painted gore markings instead of concrete curb in these locations which are on the ramps down into the subsurface parking. Roger has concerns that if we curbed it, there'd be pounding of drainage on the ramps, and he is more comfortable with painted striping, so we've agreed to seek that waiver for the discussions with him. And then, number five, we discussed previously, we're requesting a waiver to allow 22-foot drive aisles without parking along them, due to the item that we discussed earlier with the distinction between the 25-foot and 22-foot difference in the code. Specifically, in Roger's letter on his third page in subdivision two, numbers three and four, he speaks specifically about two of the waivers being requested. So once again, the 44-foot cartway of King of Prussia Road, we already discussed, and then he asks for some specific locations where the waiver is requested for the 22-foot drive aisle. We are proposing three-lane cross-sections at the two entrance points, for three 12-foot lanes for the movements at the intersection. For the remainder of that drive lane, which we don't believe necessarily meets the definition of an entry lane, we're 22 feet from this point all the way along the rear and through here. And then, if we're counting these entrance lanes, these are also 22 feet getting back to the parking areas. So we'd be seeking the waiver in all those locations, including this drive lane coming around here. Once again, that's, a 22-foot drive lane is two 11-foot lanes, which is what's going to be constructed on King of Prussia Road as well, so we believe it's appropriate. Roger makes a note on the conformance with the fire marshal comments, and we received a memo from him dated February 25th.
Item six on the last page.
Yeah, Roger's reference is item six on the last page, correct. And we believe we can work with the fire marshal during final land development to address all his comments, but as Ross noted, as part of the edits on his first comment, we did push these two buildings closer to the drive lane for his concern about proximity from a paved surface to the building for firefighting. So we believe we've addressed that concern. And then, Amy issued a recent letter on April 6th, that I believe is a draft review of the Traffic Impact Study. Those are all well complies. The only item we wanted to note is, on page three, Roman numeral five, number one, she speaks to some traffic issues with medical office use. And as John discussed, with the traffic adaptive signals and all the traffic improvements that are being added above and beyond what was offered in the 2009 plan for the traffic neutrality, any increase in traffic would be offset by those additional improvements that we're proposing. And then, Amy also has a March 31st letter, which I believe is a plan review letter as opposed to the TIS review letter. And those are all well complies. And we've had some discussions with her. We just want to highlight two topics on her final page, or I guess her second-to-last page, or page four. At the very top, Roman numeral, small i, three, she's requesting a sidewalk pedestrian path from the southwest corner of the parking lot to the sidewalk proposal on King of Prussia Road. We believe she assumes in this corner, and this is the area of a large retaining wall, so we've discussed with her that we don't believe that pathway is appropriate. It would be a large staircase and not one that offers any additional circulation that wouldn't be obtained by just entering the campus through the sidewalks that are provided. And I believe she agrees that that sidewalk's not needed. And comment number seven, Roman numeral two on that same page, there's a request for a truck-turning template at the SEPTA driveway making a right turn. We do not control this corner that's owned by Radnor Racket, so we can't make any improvements to that corner, so we've agreed with Amy to restrict right turns for any truck vehicles. Any truck that comes out of that driveway would have to turn left and wouldn't be able to turn right. So we'll agree to that restriction. And other than that, we're two, issued a letter, but those are all well complies. So we have nothing else to present.
Could I ask for you to tell me where your reference to the medical building is in here? We have so many letters, and I'm not sure when we received it.
She issued a letter dated April 6th. I just saw it today for the first time. So let me.
[inaudible]
Yeah, it's April 6th, page three of four, Roman numeral five, comment one.
Okay, thank you. And one other, do you talk about impervious, or is that somebody else?
I mean, I can speak to it.
Okay. In this plan here, you show basically a single walkway area coming through the center there between the buildings. And the illustration you showed us earlier, where you have the title up, you show, could you go back to the illustration?
I believe it's on my.
With the Radnor Plaza.
On the laptop.
Is that the trail?
No, the fancy illustration, the rendering.
If you just switch to the laptop, I believe it's up.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that one. There you show two walkways, and it appears to be some sort of impervious in the center, which is very attractive, but that's not what you're showing on the plan. So when you calculated impervious, were you planning on doing this? Because you did state, or somebody did, that this is basically what you're doing on these plans.
Yeah, I mean, this is illustrative, and it's just that illustrative in nature. The plan that was submitted is what we're proposing and what was calculated from. The illustrative image is just a concept sketch of the pedestrian townscaper, pedestrian courtyard concept, and, you know, we'd have to work with materials based on this design, but we haven't fully engineered what we envisioned. This is just a concept drawing of the corporate feel that the project's trying to.
Well, I think that's attractive, and if you're going to put it in, it would be nice to do, but put it in with your impervious calculations. Because I have seen on San Diego, a lot of corporate structures like this, where they have plazas in the center, and people sit out there to eat lunch and so forth. But I think it needs to be calculated in, if that is what you're doing here.
I think I hear him saying he's not, they're not doing this. They're doing what's on the drawings.
Right. We're doing a concept similar to this in accordance with the calculations in the impervious we're putting into the plan we're submitting.
Okay, so it's really not.
It's not this.
Yeah, I agree. Why would you show us this? I mean, is this supposed to be a bait-and-switch kind of deal, or what?
It's from a previous presentation.
If I could answer that, what you're seeing in this sketch is you're seeing multiple forms of pavement, of surface material.
I understand, but the gentleman who brought this up kind of was pushing that this is what it's going to look like, and people are going to be able to sit out here and walk back and forth. I mean, the impression that I got from his presentation was, this is what we're going to do, it's going to be really nice, and let us do it, because it's going to be so nice. And that's not kind of what you're saying. So don't show us something, please don't show me something that you're not going to do.
What we're saying is that the.
I know what you're saying. What I'm telling you is, don't show me something you're not going to do.
I would like to ask one question. Because there's parking garage under all, is there a parking garage under all of this stuff?
No, there's not.
Okay. Where, I mean, if this, is there going to be actual grass? Or is there going to be parking garage underneath that grass, in the areas that are shown on the plan there?
Well, there's subsurface parking, so there'll be grass above it, but the parking garage is limited to an area here and an area here. But, you know, like this area, there's no parking garage. You know, all this landscaped area around the perimeter, it's no subsurface parking. So it's a combination.
Yeah, the idea was that it might look green, but portions of that are also impervious, is that right? Or you're dealing with it as pervious because you're controlling the stormwater coming off of that?
Right. It's green on the surface.
The, to look at the drawings, not this, not the colored thing. Stormwater's not my thing from a technical standpoint, and I did read that none of those calculations have been done yet, none of the infiltration tests or anything like that. But from the pictures, it looks like the stormwater systems are kind of small for the amount of building that's going to be going on in here.
No, I mean, we've submitted a stormwater report to Roger. I think all that's remaining is confirmation of infiltration rates to show that they drain in sufficient time, which we'll provide during final land development. But the basins are all sized to meet the peak rate requirements and to provide the required volume storage that's required by code.
And then, well, that's what I was just going to ask. That was going to be the second part of my question. To the extent that, I mean, our code is our code, and you're going to meet our code, is there any intention to exceed it?
I have to revisit the stormwater report to see exactly what the volumes are, and we're still in the process of finalizing the infiltration testing, so we really have to see those results before we can present exactly what, how they're going to.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to move to staff comment now. I guess, a few questions. Well, you know what? Amy, we had, they had mentioned, I guess, several waivers that they were seeking, and are you pretty much in agreement with most of these, or? As they said you were?
Yes. The only one that I want to bring to your attention is the letter that you received today from me on the Traffic Impact Study, dated April 6th, which is today. If you move to page three, Roman numeral five, V, letter three, I. The auxiliary turn lane warrant analysis indicates that 275-foot northbound left-turn lane at Raider Road is required.
Can you tell us, walk us through that? And I actually had a question about that, but a left-bound turn lane from where?
So the buses and students that are coming into Raider Road, in order for that intersection to operate, except, well, actually, I think the level of services values were okay, I'm not positive on that, but we typically run a warrant analysis based on the traffic volumes that are on a roadway, the number of left turns, and we go through pictographs to identify whether or not the left-turn lane is warranted, and then it determines what the length of the turn lane should be to accommodate the traffic. So based on the calculations that were included in the Traffic Impact Studies, 275-foot lane is required for that approach. And I understand the concerns with the right-of-way on their property. There is sufficient right-of-way on the school district property, however, there's significant drop-off just beyond the sidewalk that exists out there right now. So I didn't want to leave that without having some kind of discussion and, you know, discussing it with you at the meeting. I see Mr. Witchner's coming up, so.
I can, yes. As we talked about, King of Prussia Road will be widened to a four-lane cross-section, so we have two lanes heading southbound King of Prussia Road, two lanes heading northbound King of Prussia Road. As you get to Raider Road. As you get to Raider Road, there'll be, again, two northbound lanes. In the, I call it the middle lane, you can either go straight, continue up King of Prussia Road, or you can make a left into Raider Road. You can also, there's also the outside through lane that will just continue up King of Prussia Road. So you have an opportunity to have a vehicle waiting to make a left on King of Prussia Road, and any vehicle that wants to bypass that vehicle can use the other lane to bypass that vehicle. The other aspect was that we had, in previous, previous plans, we had talked about kind of a five-lane cross-section on King of Prussia Road. We had gotten some feedback, both, I believe, from the planning commission and the commissioners, that they didn't want this highway through King of Prussia Road. And so we do comply with the ordinance in terms of the four-lane cross-section on King of Prussia Road. It does operate for an acceptable level of service. And with the traffic signal that we'll be installing, we can do all sorts of things, such as putting in a left turn advance phase or a northbound advance phase for those left turn vehicles to have a green arrow and protect that movement before southbound traffic, opposing southbound traffic can go. So there's a couple of things to keep that intersection safe, including the signalization that's being proposed, as well as a left turn arrow.
Amy, how do you feel like, first of all, I drive that every day, and I know that intersection better than I ever want to. So Amy's spot on about we need a turn lane there. But Amy, my question for you is, the, did the traffic signal in auxiliary turn worksheet take into account that there's going to be a light there?
At the light, yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
And so even with the light, and even with a dedicated left turn at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the signaling, it still warrants the turn, the turning lane?
It doesn't take into consideration those types of, Mr. Witschner, could you correct me? Am I correct in that, that it was under signalized conditions in the warrant analysis?
Well, the warrant analysis doesn't take into account the actual intersection control. It's based upon, strictly on volume only, volume and the geometry of the roadway, not necessarily the actual control of the intersection. So if it was a stop-controlled intersection or a signalized intersection, those volumes are still there, no matter if it's signalized or not. But if it was signalized, we can then start to add in a left turn advance phase or a northbound advance phase to let those left-turning vehicles enter into the high school driveway before any other vehicle goes.
Something's going to have to happen because, as it is right now, there's a center lane. And, I mean, that thing is backed up almost to Lancaster at, you know, there's, granted, it's only 10 or 15 minutes in the morning, but it's very much warranted, something there. I guess my question about that is, does it have the ability to give a longer, which is something I was going to mention to you this morning, I mean, based on something that happened to me this morning, but do these lights have the ability to give a longer dedicated left-hand turn lane from, say, 7:20 to 7:40? I mean, do they, do they have the ability to put a longer? We don't need a long left, dedicated left turn lane, or a smart turn, where when there's a big queue of cars, it's longer than when there's a short queue. Because this morning, I went southbound on King of Prussia to get onto the Blue Route, so I had to take the left-hand turn. It let three cars through. That is what the left-hand turn from King, I mean, it was like, no wonder why King of Prussia Road gets backed up southbound. Three cars could get through at 20 of eight this morning.
Right.
And then the light turns yellow and it goes away. So do these signals have the ability to take into account that there's times of the day when they need to have a longer queue? There is a longer queue.
The short answer is yes. You had mentioned something needs to happen, and something is happening. Wideening of King of Prussia Road, and with the traffic signal adaptive system, it's not just working on pre-programmed timings for, you know, seven to eight or eight to nine. They take a minute-by-minute historical count of traffic, and they know that on a Tuesday at 7:20, this is the typical time that left turn advance phase has been needed in the past on a typical weekday, and they'll start to implement that on a real-time basis. And that's, I think that's one of the benefits. And again, I had mentioned 150 signals in Southeast PA. That was actually as of about a year ago. We're probably up over 225 signals in this, in this region. I think those are the types of things, those crunch times, that's, I think, what certainly helps the most with this, with this technology.
Don't they have sensors? Isn't there a sensor where the people, there's a stack in the lane, and let more cars go? And then when there's no cars, it doesn't even take a left-hand turn? Because I knew some of the, some of the intersections that I go through, it seems as though if there's a lot of cars, more cars go through. If there's only one car, then that left-hand turn arrow is a shorter period of time.
Right, that's exactly. There's a couple of different ways to do that. You can do, you see sometimes the loop detectors embedded in the roadway that senses a vehicle on top of it. That's one way. Another way is actual video detection on the mast arm above the roadway. It senses when a vehicle's there. And I think that, kind of to Susan's point about a longer stack of cars, you can actually put a loop detector further back from the intersection, 100, 200, 300 feet back to then say, okay, at this time, at 7:20 or 7:25 a.m., that loop detector that's sitting 200 feet back from the intersection, there's a vehicle there. So let's start to add more green time to that left turn advance phase to hit the point that you're talking about. Sure.
I have a question. So I can see how a lot of these movements will help with the flow of the traffic getting back onto 476 or Lancaster Avenue. But how are we going to address, so we've got this backup at Radnor, Raider Road, right around 7:00, 7:10 in the morning. But we still have a backup at Radnor Chester Road at 9 o'clock in the morning, 8:45 in the morning. How are any of these improvements, or even just having extra lanes, going to handle the additional traffic that's already happening beyond the high school area? In other words, I feel as if this four-lane highway is just going to be a stack-up of cars now because it can't drain on the other end. Can you offer any information of that since we last had the discussion about?
When you're, you're talking about at King of Prussia Road and Radnor Chester Road?
Yes, there's a light there, and obviously it's down to one lane each direction. And we're going to have an increased amount of cars, especially in the afternoon, but also in the morning, too.
The biggest problem at that intersection is the overpass that's just beyond it. Because it's actually widened just south of that area, but because of the overpass, that's where you're, you have difficulty, and you need to taper back down to that single lane to get through that structure in that area.
Right, and we had talked about the fact that there would have to be some type of improvement there to make it four lanes through there. But do we really even want to do that because of the impact to the neighbors? And so if we, if it doesn't happen, how do you, how do you keep these lanes empty enough because you're going to have such an increased traffic that's already built up and backed up there?
Well, the traffic that's associated with this, I mean, that's, that's an existing problem today. And the traffic that's associated with this doesn't continue through that in the morning when the backup's occurring in the morning? Am I correct that it's more of a problem during the morning at those intersections?
Well, at the morning, it's Radnor Chester Road, but then we also have the evening dump where the people that are leaving this biomed facility will often be going home, and there's the increase of traffic along King of Prussia Road headed northbound. So I just didn't know if any of these signalized intersections were going to deal with that, or if there was any improvement to that type of flow.
If the pinch point is occurring at the overpass, and if that's where it's occurring, then it's not going to resolve that because it's, it's a physical funneling of the traffic. And if you don't do something at the pinch point, obviously, you're not going to be able to allow the flow to occur or get through more quickly. But at the traffic signals, you should see some improvement with the movements because we've been talking about the traffic adaptive and how they're able to distribute that time based on what's going on with the traffic volumes out there. So there would be some improvement at the intersections, the signalized intersections. But as far as getting through that area, the pinch point, it's not going to make things better at that point.
As I recall, when he showed us the automated, what do they call them, signalized? Two or three of them are on the other side, on the north side, at King of Prussia and...
Mattson Ford Road.
Mattson Ford, yeah. I'm showing my age here. There are a couple, there's one going into the gateway, is it the gateway building? The one that goes into Radnor Elementary School. There are two signals or three signals on that side, too, are there not? And how would they work with the ones on the south side of the track?
The, right now, there are four signals tied. If we can maybe go to the laptop or the screen, right now, there's four signals as part of one system. It starts at Radnor Chester Road and King of Prussia Road, and then goes up toward King of Prussia and Mattson Ford Road, and then heading to the east, two more signals along Mattson Ford Road. So those four signals are part of one system. And using this technology on all four signals in the system, I guess, gets a bigger bang for your buck. You're not going to do one out of four, or two out of four. Doing, doing four out of four is going to give you the biggest bang for your bucks. And now they're all operating together on that system. So even though we're not sending much, much at all traffic down Mattson Ford Road, again, 75% of it is desiring to use eastbound and westbound Lancaster Avenue, and then the Blue Route, those two signals kind of get wrapped into this project by their sheer location and existence as part of the system.
Would it be, would it be possible to program them or have them programmed so that they would actually meter the traffic that's going underneath the railroad bridge there, even though it's one lane in each direction?
You actually could do that. That's, that's getting into some of the more advanced programming during the design and permitting process with PennDOT. But I think what you're, almost purposely holding up some traffic or kind of having a certain staggered progression of traffic in certain directions in King of Prussia Road, I think is what you're kind of getting at. So they're not hitting all at once. They're kind of metered, I think, you know, the word you used. That's, that's an advanced timing program that we can put in there when we kind of go through that process of PennDOT.
One of the big issues, and Liz brought it up, was most of us have no problem with that going under the train bridge and going to Mattson Ford and turning right on that, and just letting traffic go down in that direction. A lot of the people in the community would have a tough time with that traffic just continuing to barrel north on King of Prussia Road. That's residential in there, they don't want to do that. Would we, I know that's not part of this project, but would it be prudent to find some way to divert the majority of that stuff off on Mattson Ford Road? Or is that, I'm being ridiculous here?
Well, I don't think we're going to, I don't think we'd want to purposely divert traffic to Mattson Ford Road. Yeah, based upon our, based upon the existing traffic patterns that we're seeing, we are seeing that heavy desire to use 476 and Lancaster Avenue, east and west. Will there be a vehicle or two going up King of Prussia Road? There are. I think that that starts to get outweighed by the regional improvements, specifically along Lancaster Avenue. And sometimes people are trying to avoid Lancaster Avenue. And we want to keep them on Lancaster Avenue, and that's why we're improving Lancaster Avenue to improve that flow there. That's really where the cars should be. So let's improve Lancaster Avenue.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. If it's still staff questions, I do have a question for Mr. Witschner. If you could just step through the traffic adaptive signal system. So I am very pleased to see the applicant doing off-site improvements for what is not necessarily a project that would require that by our ordinance. So there's the restriping of the 476 exit ramp, the additional turn lane at King of Prussia and Route 30. And very happy to see the traffic adaptive system. The township has actually applied for a grant for one, and it was also part of the conditional use for Villanova. So we're hoping at one point, we can tie all this together. But from what I understand about traffic adaptive systems, one of the issues can be when that system stops, so the last intersection. So it concerns me on Radnor Chester Road where there's a gap. So the township is installing a sys, is going to be installing a signal in conjunction with improvements at the high school at the other Raider Road. And then there's an additional signal down by TD Bank. So if we have all these signals tied together, now there's going to be a gap. So what happens when it drops off coming down Radnor Chester Road, at Raider Road, at TD Bank, and then picks up again? That gap concerns me, and I just, I don't know if you can explain further on that?
We haven't, we haven't analyzed the other Raider Road with Radnor Chester Road there. There are some, there is some technology that with cue detectors or loop detectors can sense that traffic even outside of a traffic adaptive system there. I think that those are peak hour times that the signal will actually make that intersection operate pretty well. We can look at, we can look at how that, the difference or the delta and how the system operates with and without, say, the intersection at Raider and Radnor Chester.
I think we need to know that. I mean, aside from Mrs. Kaminsky's comment on the turn lane on the other side, that gap does concern me. And again, very appreciative that the applicant is willing to do all this off-site work, and it goes, you know, well beyond the site. But if this is a, if there's a snafu on Radnor Chester Road because the traffic adaptive system does not continue through, I think it's just, it's something we should look at and be able to provide our traffic engineer with some hard data on that.
Is it limited to nine? Is that all it can do?
No, no.
Could these like, could these signals be added to it, Steve?
Conceivably, but my point is if, so the entire project is encircled by the traffic adaptive system, but just these two signals. And that's my concern.
Can't they add those two signals?
They could be added at any time, but it may be more prudent to do it as part of this.
Well, that's what I mean. Why, can we add those two new signals that aren't in it? If you're doing nine, why not 11?
Steve had mentioned these grant programs, and a lot of parts, a lot of parts of these grant programs is using local dollars as a match to get additional state funding from PennDOT or other entities. I, I don't want to speak for biomed, but there may be an opportunity to leverage some of this local match to, to gain funds for an additional intersection.
Well, I can put that to rest, so to speak. So we did apply for a grant, and we are using our local funds, and that will take us basically through the Villanova corridor. Villanova was required for the conditional use to supply funds. Villanova Center is also giving us money for that. But it stopped short of this area. So understood, and I mean, there might be a future grant, another Greenlight Grant Row, Greenlight Go grant that we can apply for, but.
And I am speaking about a future grant. You know, some of these matches for grants are typically between 20 and 50% of the overall cost. If we can leverage the cost for nine intersections to get two more, well, that's a, that's an 80 to 85% local match, which will be looked very favorably by PennDOT when looking to see how much skin is in the game from a local perspective. Yeah, to Steve's point, we can take a look at that.
Okay. I have a question other than this. And I kind of asked this before, and I'm kind of a little bit confused looking at these drawings. The in and out of the project site on the south one and the north one, and I'm not sure if I remember this incorrectly, which is more likely not, on the north exit, I thought there was no left-hand turn coming out of the project. Was that right? Did I hear that last time, or somebody say something to that effect?
No, no.
I thought cars, I thought cars, so that they wouldn't be going past the school, that all the exits coming out that we're going to go south on King of Prussia Road, we're going to use the south exit?
We're not restricting lefts out of that driveway. I think that when someone on site has an option of using the southern driveway with a signal versus an unsignalized driveway up at the north, they'd probably use the signalized driveway to the south. So again, we're not restricting left turns. I don't think it would be happening very often because I think there's an easier way to get off-site. But we also are kind of bound by the easement that runs up that northern axis to get up to the Septa, Septa parking lot as well. So if we restrict the lefts out from that, from this intersection, restricting all the access, all the drivers for the Septa bus.
I just thought, you know, at 5:00, my concern is, at the end of day, and I brought this up last time, is the stacking from the drive, the South Drive to Lancaster Avenue. You know, half the cars come out at that time. How many cars are going to be able to stack there? And then we're going to have a backup. And then what they're going to try and do is sneak up to the north side and come out.
And that's where, that's where these two signals along King of Prussia Road working in conjunction help. And again, that, you're probably describing an hour-long, maybe peak for people exiting this campus here. But again, there's, there's loop detectors, there's video detection. And quite honestly, my recommend, I'd rather have vehicles queuing on the site driveway than they are on King of Prussia Road. So if we, if they need to be held internal to the.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's, I would rather that also. That's why I'm saying, if they're going to stack in the site, I'm okay with that one. If they see all this coming out here, they're going to sneak up to the north side and start stacking on King of Prussia Road. They're going to figure out, oh, you know what? Why should I sit in here? I'll go out every day, I'll just come out the other side and come down and start stacking there.
I think, you know, people have to make the decision whether or not you wait for a gap in traffic on King of Prussia Road, or you get a guaranteed gap with a green light.
Or you put aside no left turn F between 4 and 6.
All right, we can, we can, you know, take that up at our recommendation phase.
Just a quick question, if I could please, before you escape there.
Yeah.
What is your accepted level of traffic at this point at Lancaster and King of Prussia Road? You had mentioned it was acceptable. What is that number? D, E, or F?
It's.
Presently?
If I can get some data here.
Come back to us with that if it's going to take you a while to look for it.
I'm right here.
Okay.
In the morning, in the morning peak hour at King of Prussia Road and Lancaster Avenue, in future conditions without our site, the intersection will operate Level Service F with an average delay of 97 seconds. With our, with our traffic and with our improvements, it's still a Level Service F, but not as bad of an F. So we're improving, it's just over 90-second delay for the entire intersection. So we are improving the morning peak hour. In addition, we're improving the afternoon peak hour about 20% as well. Again, these are Levels of Service F, but a better F.
They're currently F at these numbers, not added your projected 2009 development. These are the current numbers, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Trying to do a no build versus build comparison.
Right.
So, yes.
Okay. So what you're saying is it's an F now, the way it is right now, and after you build and do the traffic mitigation system, adaptive system, it will be an F, but a better F?
Actually, I'm not even giving myself some credit for some of the other improvements. We can't model, from a theoretical standpoint, this, the benefits of a traffic adaptive system. So with just a physical improvement, southbound right turn lane on King of Prussia Road, and the improvements coming off the northbound 476 ramp, those are showing improved delays, improved levels of service there.
Including dumping all your new traffic?
Yes, yes. Now, and then with the traffic adaptive system, as I mentioned, PennDOT has six different studies in a post-implementation phase, and they've seen between 38 and 62% improvement on top of that.
Question, one question, Steve. It's an F now, or it's an F of the pre-2009 approved?
It's, in 2012, it was Level Service E. In 2017, without.
No, no, I mean, you said it will be an F at the 2009 approved, or it's F right now?
It's, it's an E right now, and in the future, in 2017, we look at, we look at five years beyond when the counts were done. So in 2017, nothing happens. It'll be Level Service F without Biomed, without any 2009 approved plan, without any improvements. And then with this development, with the physical improvements, it will be improved.
An improved F.
That's correct.
An F plus as opposed to an F minus.
Right, not even taking into account the benefits of the traffic adaptive system.
Can I ask you a real quick question? I'm an engineer. When you, when you do these things, how do they communicate? I mean, I assume that the controls on each of the signals communicate with each other to coordinate all of this stuff. How do they do that? Or is that beyond the scope of?
Probably beyond the scope of our meeting.
We have, we have 20 traffic signal designers and engineers on staff that know more about this technology than I do, but.
Thank you. The point I'm trying to make is it may just be a matter of putting chips or computer chips in existing control systems, is that right? Rather than putting whole new signals and so, because most of these signals are already up there.
The mast arms are staying the same, the actual, the physical poles are staying the same. It's really the software inside, the big silver cabinets are being significantly upgraded.
Steve, I don't think we finished getting Amy's concurrence on some of the, some of the points in the, in the letter. If I'm not mistaken, I think, for example, the March 31st, March 31st letter, page four at the top, provide sidewalk pedestrian path.
Yes, I had meant to eliminate that. I thought I had eliminated that comment.
Okay, how about right, right below that, item seven, sheet 3.3?
I'm fine with that, with the condition of the, making it a condition.
Okay. On April, on your April 6 memo, we were just, spent a lot of time, excuse me, on page three, excuse me, page three, item, Roman numer, small i, and then there's i, small i, i. Going over to the last page at the very top, no northbound left turn lane is proposed, and 100-foot northbound right turn lane with an 85-foot taper is proposed. You're okay with that?
I am. I, while we were sitting here, I was reviewing the level of service and delay that's occurring and what's anticipated for it. So the calculations show that this is what is needed for the auxiliary lane. However, the calculations that came out of the software, which is what we use for our signal timing and what we look at for our level of service and delay, looks to be adequate.
Very good, thank you.
Amy, the, one of the comment letters talks about, it's not your letter, but it does talk about, in order to do the additional northbound lane, it's going to require, pardon me, right-of-way, the applicant will do, oh, here it is, I'm sorry. It's on, it is on your letter. It's on your March 31st letter, page two of five, three, under identified improvements, number three, Roman numeral lower four. Widen northbound King of Prussia to provide a separate right turn lane contingent upon the ability to secure the right-of-way. Whose, whose right-of-way do they need? Is this not a definite thing that's happening? Are you working on this right-of-way? What's the deal? Because you've talked a lot about this northbound King of Prussia.
It's.
Is that the?
That's actually to secure the right-of-way from the school district. The right-of-way actually needs to be taken from the school district because there's, I believe there's a structure right there on that corner.
So we're talking about the?
It's the northbound right turn lane.
The northwest corner of Lancaster and King of Prussia Road?
No.
Okay.
It is the southwest corner along the high school, because, because of the structure.
South of the high school. I was thinking.
Yes, they're about the point.
We're saying the same.
Nope, come on back up. Who's ever pointing there, move it up. There you go.
You mean this intersection?
That's to provide that right turn lane.
That's not, that's not the school district's land.
On the other side it is. There's a structure right in there.
See, they have to, in order to do their ingress lane into their property, they need to take right-of-way from the school district on the opposite side of King of Prussia Road?
Isn't there a structure right on that corner?
Now, this is, we're talking about the right turn lane, northbound right turn lane into our southern access, correct?
Correct. Yeah, well, that's what, yeah.
That's the area you're talking about. That, and we talked about this previously, this corner is owned by PennDOT itself. King of Prussia Road is a township road, so you have to convert PennDOT, V-Simple-owned land. So PennDOT, we'd have to work with PennDOT for PennDOT to give up land they own and convert it to township right-of-way.
Appreciate that. Amy, where is it you're saying that they're going to need to state, take school district land?
That's the other corner. As you're heading south, that's, that's a different comment.
To create the, well, this is going to be the other part of my, my only traffic question, really, because several times I've seen it referenced that the second southbound lane that you want to create there to go west on Lancaster, somehow that is mitigating the fact that you want to have a traffic, that you want to have a traffic signal at your southern exit. And I'm trying to understand why that's going to, how that's helping the traffic light there. And that's, you need to get right-of-way from the school district for that one.
Sure.
Is that accurate?
I guess, let me explain the improvement.
That's one i. That comment is one i.
Right, yes, okay.
So today, during certain times of the day, southbound King of Prussia Road at Lancaster Avenue backs up. And in future conditions, it'll continue to back up past this driveway by adding the second southbound right turn lane that allows, that gives additional capacity on southbound King of Prussia Road to then not have those vehicles back up as far as this driveway. So in providing this second southbound right turn lane, it reduces the queues, so they do not, they now do not block the southern access. With regards to right-of-way, we're actually still doing some research on, on PennDOT right-of-way along Lancaster Avenue, township right-of-way along King of Prussia Road, and school district property. I think that there's different plans that both McMahon and Naevneal have that are differing a little bit, but.
Yeah. I mean, to follow up, we're still, as John said, we've, we've pulled multiple plans in this area is the intersection point of a PennDOT project and then some records on the township plan. But from what our surveyors have looked at so far, and we still have to finalize our review, but we believe right-of-way might not be required. It might be as simple as maybe just some small construction easements to build the retaining wall that's necessary there. So we might not actually need that right-of-way.
Okay, I guess my only point about both of those seem to be pretty two, pretty important improvements. They've been, those two pieces of the traffic puzzle seem to be pretty key, and you have to talk to, or figure out from two different entities. So I think that needs to get, I would not want to go very far down the lane. Again, kind of like what Charlie said about, don't show me a pretty walkway if all you're going to do is a site, you know, is a one-line thing. These are two pretty important pieces of your, of your traffic puzzle, along with the traffic adaptive system, which I'm really, really happy you guys are doing that. And I'd be happier if you included the back of the high school where the kids come out. You'd see, you'd see a bigger smile. But anyway.
That's your own school.
No, because I have kids who drive, but in any event, but those are two pretty important pieces of, of the traffic puzzle. So this is kind of the contingent part. It's not a surprise to me because this is a new part of your plan, so don't get me wrong. It's not like I'm upset about that, but those are important to get figured out before we can say for sure that that's what you're actually going to be able to do. Thank you.
Like to get a public comment now?
I'm George Brosman, representing the Brandywine entities. They're going to take away the plans again.
If there are plans, it's their right.
That's fine. I just don't know what the secret is all the time. Maybe I could.
It's been up here in public. This is a public meeting. It's been up there for you.
So you don't want to leave it up, but that's fine. Maybe I could borrow one of the planning commissioner's plans if needed. I'd like to break up my comments into two pieces, if allowed. I had some questions that might inform my comments, so I didn't know if I, it might make sense if I could ask the questions, and then you could decide if I would be given an answer or not. And then I have comments on, I think it's roughly five areas, and I'll try to be brief. Is that okay to proceed in that way?
Please do.
So with regard to questions, can we get a copy of Amy's April 6 letter? I went on the website today, did not see it, and I did not see it in the package.
Mr. Brosman, if you go to the website and look under the Biomed section, it is there now.
Okay. I don't know what time it was up. I looked earlier, and I didn't see it in the back there.
I didn't issue it until this afternoon. My apologies.
I'm not criticizing you. You didn't have a lot of time. It was only submitted about 10 days ago. And we haven't seen the study either. I assume you all haven't. I had a question about the traffic comparison. There was a graphic put up claiming traffic neutrality, and it compared the proposed plan to the 2009 approved plan. I wanted to know, is there a traffic study or a similar comparison done to show the existing conditions versus what they're proposing? Because the existing conditions, by my calculation, is roughly 427,000 square feet, whereas the 2009 approved plan that was never built was about 475. So when they're saying traffic neutrality, they're always comparing it to a plan that was not built. So is there a similar graphic, or could we get one that compares it to the existing condition, which is about 427,000 square feet with 862 parking spots? The third question I had was, in the list of waivers, there's a list, requested waiver to use the ITE trip generation rather than the code. I was looking at the code, and it refers to an appendix in the SALDO, and it says that the traffic study should use the numbers in the appendix. And there's a category in there for business office, and I had a question of whether, if that waiver wasn't granted, would the traffic generation estimates be higher? Stated another way, by granting the waiver, is that in some way lowering the traffic estimates? So that's a question. My next question is, on the list of waivers, it mentions a waiver for the cartway width of 44 feet on King of Prussia Road versus 48 feet. In the comment in Roger's letter, he notes that a right-of-way of 80 feet is required for King of Prussia Road, but 65 feet is shown on the plan. So I had a question of whether that waiver is going to be requested to not provide the 80-foot-wide right-of-way along King of Prussia Road. My next question was, in the impervious or green space calculations, are the green roofs on the buildings being counted in any way as landscaped area? Number one. Number two, is the areas shown on the plan as being green that has the parking garage underneath it, are those green areas with the structure right underneath it being counted as green area for the landscaping requirement? And the third subpart to that question would be, if they do request the waiver for the 80-feet right-of-way, or if the township does not grant that waiver, what does that do to their calculations? I think particularly with regard to landscape area, I believe that's to be counted on the, on the lot area less the right-of-ways. And on the plan, as I saw it, I think they are excluding the proposed right-of-way, I would presume of 65 feet when they did their landscape coverage. But I don't know what the calculation would be if they were required to give the 80 feet, and if that would put them out of compliance. So I, those are my questions. I don't know if you want to try to get answers.
Let me just take, well, let me just take a few minutes to ask the question, I guess, the right-of-way, do we know that without having to study that?
Do we know what?
What the, are they required to have an 80-foot right-of-way?
That's what the ordinance reads.
Okay.
And obviously, to answer Mr. Brosman's questions, obviously, the numbers would change because you would be changing items in the calculation. So those numbers would be, would changing as applicable to what this board and the commissioners would decide on what waivers to grant.
Okay.
And they would have to meet those ordinances.
Okay. So they're proposing a 65-foot right-of-way then, I guess?
That's not one foot.
No, I know, that's why, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yes, that's what's shown on the plans, and that's why I made the comment that I did in my letter to explain that.
Okay, good. All right, so that was an open issue that we'll need to address. As far as impervious coverage goes, they're going to have to meet our township impervious coverage requirements, and they're going to have to, I guess, provide the calculations to do that. And so I think that might be for another day.
Yeah, I guess if I could just get an answer so we knew, are they counting the green roofs? And are they counting the areas where the parking garages are underneath?
Do we, I mean, the, you okay there, Susan?
Yeah.
All right. Have you looked at their, the plans they filed?
It was hard to see them. I was out last week. We had a right-to-know request, and. We had a right-to-know request, and I couldn't tell myself.
Okay. Then, they should be available to township for you to pick up.
Right. I just didn't know, does anybody know that? Do you know, Roger?
I really don't want to get into a big discussion about methods of calculation here tonight.
It's just a simple question. Do they count the green roofs?
Actually, no, it's not, George, but I would defer to Alex if he wants to take you through, and if this board wants to sit through the time it will take to explain how that calculation was done.
Oh, it seems simple. Maybe I'm not trying to be difficult. Did they count the green roofs or not?
I would like to know that, too. It's a simple question. Yes, no, we don't need the calculations now. Are the green roofs being counted as part of the impervious?
The green roofs are not, to the best of my knowledge. The green roofs are not.
And the area above the parking lot that's going to have grass or parking on it, the part that has grass, is that counted as impervious?
Again, I would defer to Mr. Tweedy, and he could take you through that entire calculation.
I don't think we need all that now. It was just the yes or no. And let me ask the board, do you remember when the...
Llewellyn Court.
Yeah. What was that counted as? Do you recall?
The roof over the garage, the submerged garage, Mr. Brosman knows, it was counted as not, it was counted as grass, not impervious.
Okay.
I didn't work on that one. I don't know.
You didn't follow that one?
No.
Okay. It's fine. The reason, I am actually interested in two things that Mr. Brosman asked. They were notes on my own piece of paper, because I did ask why the waiver from the IT trip generations, and we do have the appendixes in our SALDO book, and it's written very differently from ITE, so it's hard for me to tell if the numbers, I think what George was trying to say is, are the numbers in our own ordinance more strict, or are they higher numbers than ITE?
They're higher numbers. I just ran a real quick calculation, and they appear to be higher numbers. The reason that I support the waiver is because those numbers are from 1974, and there's more current and generally acceptable transportation calculations through ITE that are widely accepted.
Okay.
And I would support that.
Okay. And then the thing about the, with regard to the right-of-way, I think we had a different application, but this was, this was an issue, was it years ago, where the applicant asked for the smaller right-of-way, because if they didn't get the smaller right-of-way, they were out of zoning compliance with regard to the impervious. So, I think that's what George is trying to ask, is that by virtue of getting the smaller right-of-way to 65 feet, is that, are they avoiding being out of compliance with regard to, I'm assuming you mean impervious and landscaping, or just landscaping?
I think there's only a landscaping requirement.
Issue, okay, right.
And my other question was just whether the township has considered, because I'm not sure a waiver has been requested, will the 80 feet be needed? Because I know that's been considered in depth on some other applications.
And I think we have that as an open issue as well. As far as the, you know, existing conditions go, I mean, Amy, you can chime in if you like, but it just seems to me that there's 400 and whatever, 20,000 square feet there now, but there's no one using it, so if they have a right, if they have a right to develop 475,000 square feet, then I think we should be comparing it to what rights they have, not what, not what the condition is now. It just kind of seems like a wasted exercise to me.
That would be my opinion, too.
And I think staff has, it looks like staff is leaning toward the granting of, you know, the 48-foot cartway to a 44-foot cartway, because they feel that that'll be adequate, and there's a desire from the township to have a sidewalk, and that does...
I wasn't questioning the cartway one.
Okay, that's fine.
I was just asking about the right-of-way width.
Okay, great. Well, I think we covered at least your questions, or gave you a path to get those answers, so if you have other comments?
Yeah, well, my comments, then, and it may be somewhat repetitive, but traffic, that's always been the biggest concern that Brandywine has had. You know, the voluminous study was just submitted about 10 days ago. That is usually not the timeframe on which the planning commission operates. Usually, you have to submit everything 30 or 31 days ahead, and I assume why we're all here tonight is because the time on the application is running out in April, so unless Biomed were to extend that, then the township would be in a position that they need to act, so I'm not being critical of the township for having it here on the agenda with that timing, but what I'm saying about the traffic is, there's a big traffic study. We haven't gotten to look at it. I doubt you have. Amy had to rush and just hand in a review letter that a lot of people haven't seen. So, traffic remains a concern. So, without having the study, and this may be an oversimplification, but kind of how Brandywine is looking at it, as we said, there's about 427,000 square feet of space there. 200, almost 30 of it is lab space, and there's 862 parking spaces on the site now. Under the current proposal, you're going to 475,000 of all office and 1,685 parking spaces, so almost doubling the number of parking spaces. So, the concern is, just as a practical matter, not having gotten to review the study, the doubling of cars just tells a common sense person that there's going to be a big increase in traffic, and we all know the concerns with the traffic, so that remains a big concern. The second item I wanted to hit on is stormwater management. I've never seen a plan of this level go forward without having heard more about stormwater management. I think there have been so many other issues, this hasn't really been touched upon. Roger has been asking since September for the infiltration testing results. He's had several review letters. Each and every time, it's been brought up, and as far as I know, from the current letter, the information still wasn't provided. And I'm not a stormwater expert, but I would think you need to know if the infiltration tests work in order to know if the stormwater system is viable and would meet code. There is, if going by the calculations, assuming they didn't count the green roofs and things like that, there's about 52 or 53% accepting their calculations of impervious area on the site, which is about nine or 10 acres of paving here, and it seems to me we don't really know about the stormwater system. There's a provision in the stormwater management code that says it's 245-15G. The municipality shall not grant preliminary or final approval to any subdivision or land development plan if the drainage plan has been found by the municipal engineer to be inconsistent. As I read the requirements for a drainage plan, they're sort of all-encompassing, and it requires all the calculations and all of that kind of thing, so I would say, you know, why are we approving a preliminary plan when we don't have all of the stormwater Related to that is the impervious coverage question. I've raised the point through my question on that. We don't know if the numbers comply. I think the right-of-way, whether it's going to be 80 feet or 65 feet, is of critical importance. You need to know, does the township need that 80-feet right-of-way? Do they want that? Is a waiver going to be requested? Apparently, one hasn't been. So, without a waiver being requested, I think they have a plan that is not in compliance, and that would be a reason for denial. And then the final, well, two final points. One, I brought this up before, I've had smaller plans where a lot of emphasis has been put on fire safety and fire access, so unless I've missed something in the latest revisions, which is possible, we still have a conceptual parking garage plan. We have this very huge underground parking structure with several levels. I think it's about 1,350 spaces, and we have a conceptual plan for it. So, I raised it before, and will raise it again, you know, what is the fire access and public safety implications of that on a conceptual plan basis? You're being asked to approve a preliminary plan. And on my last point, I know you're going to just, I'm assuming, accept what the solicitor says, so I won't belabor it about the use of the parking garage, but we were surprised to see what we viewed as a reversal in the solicitor's opinion. The prior opinion said that the code provision was not ambiguous. It was clear, and now it's ambiguous, and I'll, not to belabor it, but all that I see from the letter from Dwayne Morris is that they've taken 60 spaces and put them underground, and they say that since they've taken 60 spaces that were allowable and put them in the mix of the 1,350 underground spaces, that that makes the garage a permitted use. Now, the code says that a garage is allowed when it's for the purpose of eliminating allowable parking. I just don't think that passes that test to say 60 out of the 1,350 spaces, most of which are needed to make this plan go, that garage is not for the purpose of eliminating allowable surface parking. It's for the purpose of providing more density on the site. You just look at the numbers, 60 of the 1,350 spots are the only ones that would be the allowable that they're replacing. So, with all of these reasons, we would ask that you recommend denial of the plan, and thank you for giving us this time.
Thank you. Is there any other additional public comment? I just have a, yeah, sure. Yep, come on.
Sorry. I know, let's go home, and we're all missing the game tonight, and I'm surprised nobody's given a report. My name's Jeff Tivano. I'm an employee of Brandywine Realty Trust, and we do appreciate, I'll be very brief here. The Biomed team has done a very good job explaining their story, and commend them for that, and spending all the time with the township and the staff to work through this. And I do genuinely believe that they believe a lot of their data points, specifically our focus is on traffic, as George mentioned, has been our concern from the very beginning and continues to be. And we know the staff has worked very diligently to work on that, and I think we've all been at this too long, and there's a lot of deal fatigue. But, as George touched on, from a practical side, I just ask you to look through it with a further lens in that the Radnor Financial Center, that the image has been presented here on several occasions, shows square footage of a project that we have that is roughly the same size that exists today at the Biomed site. And if we were to come into this township and ask for an increase of parking spaces of roughly double of what we had, going from the point of reference of 800 to 1,600, we just ask that you look through the lens from a practical side, that if we were to increase the parking volume, a business park of a comparable size across the street, is it practical to believe that we would have a net neutral traffic situation? So, there are standards, there are ITEs, there are references to those, and this team has done a fantastic job in explaining it, and I'm sure they do genuinely believe in the assumptions they have used, but I think we live and breathe from a practical side, and just ask for you to look through it through that lens. If we were to increase the volume of parking spaces in the business park that exists today that is impacted, would that be a net neutral traffic situation? That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I just have a few questions for staff, and I guess George, as it relates to the parking garage, I mean, I think generally, that's, the general consensus is the board feels the way you feel, however, our zoning code is ambiguous, and our attorney has issued a very, very definitive ruling on that, and I, as a member of the board, don't have any intention of going against that, but that's up to the rest of the board to comment as they see fit. I guess, a couple of questions I have. Amy, with the traffic, do you, I mean, do you feel that the studies that have been presented and the solutions and everything else, aside from the, some of the waivers requested, I mean, do you, is there any other additional concerns you have relative to that?
No, I don't. I don't have additional concerns.
Okay. And Peter, just a question for you. Sorry to flip back and forth. I should have started with this one. We, it's time for us to render a motion one way or another tonight, correct?
I, yeah, I think we're...
Ran out of time. Is that right?
Yeah, and I don't know what else there is to do at this point in time. It is a preliminary plan approval. It's going to be coming back to you again. I think we have the basic layout of what's going on here, and so you need to look at it and decide what, you know, how you want to vote, how you want to recommend.
Great, great.
Steve, can I ask you one question?
Yeah, sure.
You kind of just brought it up with Amy. Amy, would you have concerns if they don't get those two right-of-ways? Does that change your opinion of what's going to happen at those two spots, the right-of-way on King of Prussia Road from the School District and from PennDOT? Does that impact your opinion?
It would impact.
Little bit, no it, or nothing?
Sure. We would have to review the information and look at it, because the information that I was supplied was dependent upon them obtaining that right-of-way. However, right-of-way isn't something, if you don't own that property, it's not always 100% assured that you're going to get it. So, yes, that's something that we would have to deal with in the final development. If they came back in and were unable to get the right-of-way and proved that they had tried to secure that right-of-way and were denied the ability to obtain it, then, yes, we would need to modify the traffic impact study to eliminate the improvements that they had identified, and then relook at what kind of improvements would be required or what would have to happen at that point.
Thank you.
And Roger, as it relates to the stormwater management, I mean, do you, I mean, they're going to basically have to comply with our code, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so...
And Roger, you'll afford us, you know, what the township accepts and not accepts relative to that?
Yes.
Stormwater and management is kind of something that's near and dear to my heart. So, I, you know, I kind of get a little bit nuts when people, you know, kind of impinge on, especially in Radnor Township, because I kind of think we're a sure, a sure town that's really inland, you know, we're always, we're always flooding somewhere in this township.
I have a question.
I have a question, right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Relates to the last point you just made, Roger, and/or Peter. Mr. Brosman brought up the idea that because you don't have the infiltration data, that we shouldn't approve a preliminary plan. So, maybe this is more Peter's question, but do you agree with that statement that he referred to in our stormwater...
Well, I can, I can answer part of it, and I'll let Peter answer the other part. The, actually, the subdivision and land development ordinance conflicts with that section, so it doesn't require that in the subdivision and land development, that that plan be final, and there's, there's...
I don't mean final, I mean approved or not approved.
Well, let me finish. Under preliminary, there's a certain level of detail of design that needs to be done, which is minor. Under final plan, there is obviously the final detail, and then there's a third step in Radnor with the grading permit where we go through that again. So, there's actually three bites at the apple, as you would, with this stormwater, and it does conflict with Section 245 that Mr. Brosman referenced.
Yeah, I agree. Also, I'd want to point out, I believe the section Mr. Brosman referenced is talking about a final decision. You guys are just making a recommendation.
I heard him saying preliminary or final, unless...
No, but, but you're making, you're not making a decision, the actual decision as to stormwater. You're making a recommendation regarding this plan, and so it's really up to the board to decide whether or not they want to, they need to, you know, whether it reaches a level where they can vote to approve and provide preliminary plan approval or not. I think at this point in time, you know, you're looking to a recommendation, you're looking at a recommendation per the plans that are submitted and the details that are submitted. And I, you know, in my mind, I think they're sufficient at this point in time.
And if I could add one more thing, at this point, they haven't requested any waivers from anything involving stormwater, so they have to comply with the code or present a request for a waiver, which at this point, there has been none, so I have no reason to think why they wouldn't meet the code.
And Roger, back to the last comment about fire safety, access, again, they're going to have to comply with all our codes and as well as with the Fire Marshal.
Yes.
Right now, any additional board comment?
Roger just answered the question I was going to ask.
Should the applicant ask for a waiver as to the right-of-way? Is that...
No, they're providing a 40-foot half width. If you look at the plans, it's 40 feet the ultimate right-of-way on their side. It's 25 feet on the school. Obviously, the applicant can't provide the additional right-of-way on the school side. The SOW, though, specifically talks about providing a right-of-way on an existing street is only necessary for the half width, meaning the 40 feet. So they meet the requirements. They don't need a waiver.
So that also takes out of contention the idea that it's 80 versus 65 in terms of calculating landscape, impervious, et cetera.
Correct. That the plans show them the proper ultimate right-of-way, and I'm assuming that they've made those calculations from that proper ultimate right-of-way.
And Roger, you're 100% in agreement with that? That they do show 40 foot from the center line on their side?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then if there's any additional board comment, let's have it. If not, then someone have a recommendation or a motion. I noticed in the packet that the applicant just gave someone, I think the commissioner's an extension, it's April 30th. I have concerns about where we are still. I mean, it's another huge project. I know they've been here a lot, and we went down the path of mixed use for a long time, and it was a dead end. But personally, I have concerns about this is an incomplete process. Any other comments?
I agree with that also. This is basically a new plan that we and the township just received within the last few weeks and some of the letters just today. This is too important to the township for us to say, "Yeah, go ahead. You've been around for a while." We can't do that. I won't do it, anyway. We have to go through the specifics.
I want to add to that for a second. This is the best plan so far, but not necessarily the best plan. It's the best plan we've seen, and we've just started to see it. And I am disturbed that we get material, you know, at 4:00 in the afternoon because everybody's in a hurry to get this further along. I respect the fact that a tremendous amount of work must have been done. I'm guessing that these traffic signalizations might be, you know, a seven-figure thing instead of a grant that we got from Villanova. I didn't ask that question, but you can nod yes or no if you like, but...
It's very pricey.
Okay. Well, does that mean seven figures, just out of curiosity?
We have to work out the details.
Well, anyway, I think that's a tremendous addition to what you've been proposing. But, you know, this is gigantic, that's all. And the stormwater thing bothers me, the traffic thing, I don't think we've aired it in the right way. I think the chart that would show current conditions and future is more apropos. I know you could do it. I remember something like 198 trips is the current peak per shower, in or out, I forget which. And now we're going to 660. And yes, 200,000 is not rented or its lab, and nobody wants it. It's an impact, and the public, I think, needs to know that as well. Any other board comments?
I agree with the other comments that I think this... It seems like we've been here for so many meetings on this that we ought to be at the decision point, but then the target keeps on moving. And I'm afraid that's where we are. And I'm uncomfortable for a number of reasons with it as it stands, although I do echo the thought that this is a good plan, an improvement over what we've seen before. But I think more can be done and should be done. And again, this is an awfully huge project, and I just feel like we're being rushed a little bit too much. So I'm uncomfortable.
I have one comment, too. I definitely would like to say that the positives, including things like the landscape area, the trail networks, the sidewalks, those were all really great things that we're starting to see that we hadn't seen before. But not, again, enough time to digest the impact of weighing that against some of the negatives. So I feel like the township, with the ability to have processed some of this information a little bit before we have, has kind of gone to a little different tone than they were the last time we met about this. I felt like there was a little bit more pushback from the traffic standpoint than there is this time. And it could just be that they've had time to digest some of the information, get these letters out, and we're getting them right after a holiday where we just haven't had that opportunity. But I just want to err on the side of caution of making sure that although maybe you guys have come to terms with some of the... Still things that are in the works, the fire marshal comments, the securing of right-of-ways. I don't think I'm quite there yet. Even though I would love to see this developed the right way, I don't feel comfortable with some of the things that are still up in the air, and I'm not quite with the... I'm not in a comfort level with the traffic.
Okay. I think one thing that we need to do, if there's something specific that is... We need to make a recommendation. I just don't want to recommend denial, because that's not helpful to the board.
What were the...
Well, we can ask them to continue. I mean, so how do we go about that? Just ask them right now, or...
I mean, if you... Obviously, the planning commission seems like they're not ready to vote, and that is your... You know, you're right. And if you want to table it, you can table it. The only problem is, is that if they, you know, Biomed refuses to get granted an extension, the board has no choice but to act on it, and they will be acting on it without any sort of recommendation from you guys.
So when do we find out if Biomed refuses to table it? After this meeting, or do we ask now?
You can ask them now. You know, who knows?
Will you agree to table it?
Mr. Cooper, we think we've shown you essentially the same plan since September. It's been whittled down to get to excellent traffic, to more green space, and we do not wish to come back any further.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, I know this is a big plan. I know there's a lot of stuff to, you know, a lot of moving parts. But most of the moving parts really have to do with staff review, and they have to comply with our requirements. So although we don't have the benefit of knowing all the details, like, so what are the calculations of impervious coverage? We don't really have to know those at this stage. We have to know... First of all, it's a preliminary plan, but we also have to know... We also know that they're going to comply with it. So I'm actually okay with making a motion with, you know, whatever comments we would like. However, if the board doesn't want to go that direction, we can grant, you know, denial, but let's grant denial with specific recommendations as to why and what we're after. I don't want to have a whole list of things that they're going to have to comply with anyway as a reason for their denial, because I don't think that's beneficial. They have to comply with them anyway. So if there's something specific that's bothering you, other than it's just a little overwhelming and it seems quickly, then let's try to present that to the board of commissioners so, you know, it will be more helpful for them.
What are the issues?
My reservations are really the kind of traffic. The one thing about the two right-of-ways and Amy kind of thinks that would impact the situation. I think the right-of-ways are really... I think they're critical to the traffic movement out of that complex at high drive times. If they only have three lanes at that right-hand turn on Lancaster Avenue as opposed to four, or the three lanes, the extra right-of-way lane in, I still have concerns about traffic exiting on the northern side, taking left-hand turns heading south.
Let me ask you just a second. Peter, so, or Amy, if we approve this with their traffic study, and then they come back to us, and then they can't get everything, and then this causes a hiccup on your recommendations, and we don't like this now, I mean, does this... Since they can't deliver, what happens to this plan that we preliminarily approved?
Well, I mean, if you want to give a recommendation, one of the things I would condition it upon is them getting the right-of-way that they're saying they're going to get.
So if they don't get it...
And so if they don't get it, it comes back. And making sure that the board makes that same condition.
Right.
And the other thing, I mean, obviously, the board is going to condition their approval upon compliance with all the consultant letters. Now, I have to go back and look at the specific language in the letters, but if the letters are written appropriately, that condition itself will, you know, force them to rejigger the plan, because they can't comply with the consultant letters unless they get the actual right-of-way. And then the last reason is, as Roger stated, I believe the plans show this right-of-way as being obtained. And so if they can't get it, they can't meet the plans, they got to read... You know, they have to redraw the plans, and they have to go through the process again. So there's really three ways that the township should be protected if we do our job correctly, and that they would have to come back and show different plans and new plans if they don't get the right-of-way.
I think that... I think we have to kind of do this the way, you know, the board just did there. The commission just did the Villanova one, like Sue had drawn up, you know, a couple bullet points as to what they have to comply with. Unfortunately, I don't, you know, I'm not here long enough to kind of go through that. So the one I would put in would be those right-of-ways. I don't... I think I would approve it, preliminarily approve it based on... I think overall, this is a pretty good plan. They're going to put something there. So we've got to get something that's going to benefit the township and minimize whatever major impact it's going to have on that part of the thing. But something's going there. We can't be... We can't say that, you know, we're just going to say no and not happen. And I kind of agree. I think we've got to move... I think we've got to move it forward, you know? And preliminarily, and it comes back to us, right? At some point again?
Yes.
Okay. So I agree with you. You know, and I would put in there that they have to get those right-of-ways at that intersection, or, you know, it's not happening.
Skip's going to take notes. Let's just see if we can come to a consensus of having enough teeth in this thing to make everybody happy. And if we can, good. And if we can't, that's fine.
Yeah, I think... And I agree with you, Steve. I think we have to kind of do that. I think you kind of get... You kind of get bullheaded, and that's not fair to the people who are going to do a great project for this township. And, you know, I think that hurts us in the long run.
One thing I had to mention in comparing with Villanova. Villanova is basically the same plan refined and so forth over the past several months. We have never gone into any great detail on any of these plans, because they've been so far out of line traffic-wise and all kinds of questions. So all we've done is basically look at the overall view of it and almost say, "You've got to be kidding." But so this is, in your mind, might be the same one you've had from the beginning with just tweaking the buildings. But I don't think it is. I think it's a different plan. And I think you were granted a lot of favors in allowing it to be here tonight, quite truthfully. I think it's a definite improvement over it. I think you're heading in the right direction. But I still have a lot of difficulties and questions on there. And I really feel we're being pushed just because you want to get it done. You've been playing with this for so many years on there. But it's been different plans all these years.
Yeah, we have to... We have to make a constructive recommendation, whether it's... No, by the way, it could be denial, too. But if it's denial, I want to give them reasons. You know what I mean? So I don't care which way we go. I mean, I do have a slight opinion.
Well, let's see what we come up with.
Yeah, yeah. So let's just come up... Let's come up with the things we want, and we'll put those together, and then we'll decide at the end of the day if everybody wants to approve it with the things we want or just deny it and tell them this is what we want.
Mm-hmm.
So is there any specifics...
No, we still need the same list, so...
Yeah, exactly. So we need the same list, perfect.
Stormwater issue?
They've got to comply with this. I mean, they've got to comply with all of our ordinances. So that's number one. I don't know. It seems like everybody wants to... Is concerned about that.
Well, I think there's questions regarding the green roofs, the area over the parking areas. They're going to be green.
Right.
What sort of drainage they have underneath it? Is it really green? Are they just putting six inches of grass on top of it? I'm very concerned with underground parking that only has basically two entrances and exits as far as fire and safety on there. Yes, pedestrians can climb up steps, but how do you get fire equipment down there if you have a fire at one end near the entrances? You know, those types of things, exhaust. And if they find that they can't get the equipment down there, is that going to substantially change the plans in the driveway exits?
Or if it does, then the plan gets kicked back.
Or maybe they'll just live with it. This is my concern.
Yeah, no, but I...
Are we just going to live with it because it's been here so often?
Well, I mean, we have... We have... I mean, Peter, if I can, or get somebody in here from the township in a second? So some... Just some questions on fire.
Yes.
You know, the concern of some of the board members is, since we haven't looked at all the details relative to fires and life safety as an example, if we approve this thing, are they somehow going to ram this down the fire chief's throat or fire and life safety? I mean, there's codes that they have to comply with relative to these issues.
I mean, they're still, you know, they're going to go through the whole land development approval process, and then they're going to construct the buildings. The buildings still have to comply with the state UCC and all of those codes. And that's where a lot of the fire code and fire protection comes into effect.
So it's black and white. There's no interpretation to those codes, right?
No, no. They're pretty cut and dry. I mean, you know, you... There is an appeal process. There is a board, you know, a UCC Board of Appeals, which is like a zoning hearing board but for the building code. But there's a whole set of codes that they're going to have to comply with when they build these buildings. They're going to have to comply with the ADA when they build these buildings. You know, this is just the first step. There's a whole slew of additional requirements that they're going to have to meet even after they receive this approval. So I... And to be honest, my understanding is that, you know, the fire marshal's biggest concern was the gap between the roadway and some of the buildings and getting the trucks close enough to these tall buildings. And they, I believe, have addressed that by bringing the buildings closer. Whether or not that it's close enough, I do not know.
And I can further comment on it, because Ray works in my department. There... He still has some concerns with some of the internal circulation, but it's curb radius, making maneuvers for the trucks to get in. Nothing that's going to substantially change the plans. It's maybe going from a 25-foot radius on a curb to maybe a 30-foot. All things that are kind of what we consider plan cleanup items. There was nothing from his initial review of this latest set of plans. A lot of his concerns that were addressed early on on the larger plan were addressed. There are still some concerns, but nothing that kind of jumped out as anything significant. As far as access into the garages, those are things that we'll get really into the weeds on when the building plans are submitted for those, to make sure that the appropriate fire... Level fire protection is provided internally to their appropriate ventilation for the exhaust gases, things along that nature. So those are all things primarily when it comes to the internal workings of the garage that are done, not at the land development stage. That's more how you're getting to the garage, but internally to the garages during the building permit stage.
I think that we kind of... I think we have to kind of rely on the engineering staff and the staff in general in zoning to ensure or make sure that they comply with all ordinances and regulations that our township has. And when they don't do that, and they're asking for waivers, they come back to us. I think that's kind of what we have to insist upon. I mean, I'm not qualified enough to know about stormwater. I just know I want it, and they know, you know... I don't know about the fire codes. Alls I know is they know, and they got to tell us whether they are maintaining and meeting all those rules and regulations. We can't do that. At least, I can't do that. And maybe there's some other people that do. And I think that's what we want to kind of do, to say, "Hey, you have to..." You know, "We're okay with it. We'll pass it on, but here's what you have to do. You got to comply. Got to make sure you got the right-of-way approvals. You know, you have to meet zoning. You have to meet all the ordinances, and if you don't, you're coming back."
Kai, I'd like to make... To me, the real question is, is this particular development consistent with, you know, the comprehensive plan, the kinds of stuff that we're trying to do for the township and so forth? That's really, to me... I mean, the code compliance, that's all much... This seems as though it's the kind of development that we're going to see or is appropriate for this site. I'm worried about traffic, and I don't have any qualms about saying that. And, I mean, again, this is, you know, this is a different iteration of the same kind of thing that we've seen before. But to me, the question is, is this consistent with our... But to me, the question is, is this consistent with our, with, with the comprehensive plan? Is it the kind of stuff that we want to see or is appropriate to see on this site? And I think overall, my opinion is generally, yes. Traffic's an issue, the parking stuff, the stormwater, but those two things are code. Traffic is, is the one thing which is not necessarily going to be dictated by code, so.
It's, it's compliant with the overall plan of the township. It, it should be an office building there or something like that, or mixed use if we have found a mixed use. So I think the use is perfectly fine for there. It's just refining things so that we get the, the best plan we can get for the township and the township residents who are going to be living here long after they're gone.
Well, it's very interesting. With all due respect to the debate regarding the ambiguity and the parking and so on, I'm, I think it's appropriate to follow the lead of our, our council, but I also, I don't really necessarily see the ambiguity in the code on that particular point. But I also think that because there is room for disagreement on just what that means, that certainly they could do better than a mere 60 cars. They could take more and put more, I'd like to see more cars removed from the surface parking and placed into the garage. That may cure some issues regarding the green space. I think it's probably doable. It's one of the reasons why I'm uncomfortable with it, along with the stormwater management issue and the traffic. I get, maybe there's simply no way to avoid the increase in the traffic. I, I drive through there all the time and it's, it's already crazy and there's nobody in those buildings. I, I just feel that that, this whole, that whole thing has not been addressed properly and that's what has me concerned. And once we, once it leaves here, I'm not sure even if it comes back to us that we're going to be able to straighten that part of it out.
Amy, I just want to take John's comment, just, I just want to get this clear in my own mind, so, and from everyone else. I mean, they pretty much have a right to build 475,000 feet there provided they, I mean, we can't stop them because we don't like the traffic generates. Now, maybe that's not an Amy question, but, you know, a Steve question or whatever. So, I mean, that's my understanding, so I, we're stuck with it, is kind of my feeling is. Now, I think it's.
I think we may be stuck with it, but I think there's other things that we've done. And I, I guess we have to say that if Amy and our traffic staff is, is, says, okay, this is as good as it's going to get, it's not for us to say, nah, go back and try something else. But I do think that other tweaks can be done and I'm, the surface parking is a concern of mine. I, I think that one of the reasons why they can put 475,000 square feet on the, on the lot is because of the underground garage. And I think it, and I, and I think we all know that. It's, it's like the 10,000 pound bear over there in the corner, we're all ignoring it, but it's really the truth. So I do think that they could do a heck of a lot better than 60 lousy parking places. I think they could put more into the garage and that's what they should be doing.
Any additional thoughts, issues, comments you want to pass along?
I just want to make one comment. I briefly said this to Peter, but I'll say it again. When the first two months or three months that I was on the planning commission, we had an ordinance for student housing. And the discussion came up and we said we want to say that only two students can be housed in a new student housing as it's approved. And John said, you know, under the law, we'll lose an illegal challenge, it really, you have to approve three. And our ordinance says two. So, I mean, I hear, I read the memo. I don't agree with it, but I'm not, I'm a lawyer but not skilled in that area. And it just bothers me that the interpretation is perceived to be that vague. And I think that it might hold up better than, you know, but that's my opinion and I have to rely on staff. But that bothers me too. And like I said, we still have only two new students in a, in new student housing, not three.
The ambiguity of the ordinance, they, they more, they win more times than they don't. You know, that's, that's pretty easy. The two students, it hasn't been challenged and, and that's why it stands. If it does get challenged, it'll probably lose. Just because, you know, you know, you can't, you can't kind of just say, well, you know, we did this and then nobody, you know, it's still there. No one's really challenged it. They have challenged, you know, it's challenged all the time. I mean, you know, Kathy and I both know, I mean, being on the zoning board, it's been challenged a number of times. And it's something that usually wins, it doesn't usually lose. It's, it's a more yes than no situation. So, you know, I, I think, I think that they're allowed to put, as Steve has said, they're allowed to put this here, you know, and they're going to, they're going to put it there. You know, we just got to try and get it so it's the best thing for this township that's there, you know? I, I think that's what our problem is, you know?
Skip, you can take some notes on things that are of concern. You want to just read through those and then we'll decide which way we're going?
Well, you know, some of these are concerns like it's saying we disagree with staff's opinion. I don't think we can put that in, in terms of the, you know, I don't, I don't want to put that in.
Agreed.
So I didn't write it down. I mean, I aired my opinion and, you know, that's that. So what I have so far is that the most important thing, the first thing, must get the right of way on the school side to have that access to Lancaster and 476.
Both sides.
Both sides.
Right, okay.
I think they had their side.
The other one's PennDOT, they haven't gotten.
Oh, that's right, they don't have PennDOT, right. PennDOT and school side. So all, all right of way, so if, if we were to approve or deny, but if we were to approve with conditions, the first would be, must get the necessary right of way to create the traffic pattern that they put on their plan.
Right.
Okay.
Get the right of way so they can continue with this density of development.
Well, that would be a way of putting it in.
As Peter described, the, the right of ways on their plan, if, if they don't get the right of way, we probably don't even have to put that in there, but if you can make you feel better, but if the right of way is on the plan, if they don't get it, that's not the plan we preliminary approved.
However, Amy said they would just look at different tra, different traffic issues. I'm saying that if we don't, they don't get the right of way from both parties, then they are not allowed to have this amount of density on the property.
I, I think we have to be more specific though.
How about less than 475,000 square feet of development?
But Peter, this plan, if they don't get the right of ways, this plan is, what we've approved, we, what we have approved doesn't exist.
The simplest way it would be to stay, I mean, simplest way really is we'd say, recommend approval conditioned upon the applicant obtaining the right of way from PennDOT and Radnor School District as shown to duty improvements, traffic or roadway improvements as shown on the plan.
Okay.
And if they can't meet, if, if the board then adds that condition to their approval, if they fail to meet the condition, they can't get the, the plan, they can't move forward with the plan.
So they have to come back and then we can?
Yeah.
Harangue about it at that time?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we're a planning commission, not necessarily a code compliance commission. And we didn't get to look at the garage design because it's conceptual.
Correct. But I think as, as Kevin said, that's really not a land development issue. The land development is, you know, the outside of the garage, the interior, the interior of the garage, the design, you know, how it's built, the safety features, that's something that comes after land development.
I don't know, it seems like we have about 75% of the best plan I've seen, maybe 85% of the best plan I've seen, and we have loose ends. That's, I keep coming back to that, but, all right, we're still working on something here. The other issue is stormwater issues. So I would say that the applicant must address all stormwater issues to the satisfaction of staff. But again, I think, again, on that planning versus code compliance, Villanova managed to come up with things that were enhancements. We don't even have data you requested since September, so I don't know.
It's easier to, easier to make recommendations when we've actually seen a plan to make recommendations on. Like, that's what made Villanova so nice is that they had a stormwater plan for us so we could hash out some of the details, but I don't have those plans to make recommendations on, so it's kind of like, what's my purpose here?
The stormwater plans are included in the set. They've provided stormwater plans, they just have not done the infiltration testing. And you can't finalize the, the size of the basins until you have that data.
Well, not just the size, you can't decide if they're going to work. I mean, maybe that whole system can't infiltrate. So it's like the, without seeing that final design, you, how do you make recommendations one way? It's like reading a book where it has several different ways to go and you pick your way. It's, there's just some open-ended issues still.
We don't have to, we don't have to recommend approval. We just have to give them their comments, okay? So I mean, if people, at the end of the day, if people are bothered by, see, I think what's going to happen, I think the board of commissioners, board of commissioners is either going to agree with us and say, we're not comfortable, we haven't seen enough, or they're going to have faith in the staff that it's going to have to be code compliant and they're going to just say, fine, staff make it code compliant, we're happy as long as it's code compliant. But what we want to do is just get them these, you know, these comments. So, so, so stormwater.
I mean, Steve, if they're not, if you're, if the planning commission is not comfortable recommending approval, you certainly can recommend denial and then add on to it saying, if the board disagrees, here are the conditions we think should be attached to any approval recommendation.
And couldn't, couldn't we also just say, we actually, I don't want to deny this plan, but I would like to continue this plan and the applicant doesn't want to be continued.
And you can make that, I mean, you, you can, you know, put whatever, whatever you want, there's no set formula for this. I mean, there's a standard way of doing it, but if you don't want to follow that standard way, if you want to give an unusual recommendation, go right ahead. You can say, we want to table it. And if we can't table it, we want to deny it. But if the board doesn't agree with the denial, then we want these conditions attached.
Thank you, that's what we'll say. Okay.
Oh, the gist of it, what I just heard is that we're going to potentially recommend that we would, if we could act independently, would recommend tabling it because of these open-ended issues. However.
Yes.
If these issues aren't met, and we talk about our, I'll do this in a second, if the issues aren't met, then we would recommend denial. If we don't get satisfactory, or the board doesn't get satisfactory answers as to right of way, stormwater issues, underground parking safety and fire issues on the whole property and traffic.
I think it was more that if, if we cannot continue to another meeting, then we would have to deny. However, here's our problems with it, as opposed to our preferences.
I think that's it, yeah. Here are the things that are important to us.
Yeah.
Okay? So if we can't get a continuance, then we're going to deny, but, and that's if everybody feels that way. I don't feel that way, but we'll take it, we'll take a straw vote. But the important thing is, it's the checklist that goes with it. So here are the items that are, we want to know that the storm sewer is designed properly and code compliant. We want to know the fire and life safety is the same way.
Steve, can I ask the applicant something? Why, why are you having a hard time, you're hearing us debate where we're having our concerns, and why would you not be willing to say, hey, okay, we'll get you all these answers next month and then we'll, we just want an answer next month? I don't understand why you wouldn't do that. Why you would subject us to potentially deny it without saying, hey, you know, we, you know, we see that you're struggling, we know you want to do this, and you know there's three or four things we don't have answers for you. Why wouldn't you give us these answers?
I think most of these answers are things you'd have to, we'd have to work with at either a different part of the approval process as has been stated. I mean, underground fire safety, for example, that's a building issue, you've heard.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, we know that. We're talking about the right of way issue, the, the infiltration issue, those things that you could get answers for and solve the problems we're having. And it doesn't, I, I'm confused. You got to kind of help me here.
The right of way is on the plan, I think, as Mr. Cooper indicated.
No, we're talking about new right of way.
Pardon me?
The new right of way from PennDOT and from the school.
Right. If we don't get it, I think you heard the answer to that too.
Yeah, but we didn't like.
The plan doesn't work.
No, that's not what Amy said, because I think Sue asked her specifically, what would happen if we didn't get, or if you did not get the approval from the township, school district and also PennDOT to have those turn lanes? And Amy said, well, we'd have to look at other traffic measures, which means it wouldn't be as good as getting those turn lanes.
No.
Is that correct?
No, what I said was, we would have to reanalyze it and determine whether or not the project could move forward without those improvements.
I didn't understand it that way. But if that's what you're saying, that's fine.
Well, if, if the information that I'm provided shows that those turn lanes are being constructed and then the turn lanes don't go in, then we need to back up and determine what improvements are going to be needed because we were unable to get those turn lanes to put in.
And when you say improvements, do you mean improvements to the roads or changes in their plan?
I, I don't know what it could mean at this time, because I don't know what other improvements might be able to mitigate the deficiencies that they have.
In other words, the project couldn't go forward as, as presently presented to us?
Correct.
Okay. And that's kind of what I said. I, I think that's one of the things we got to say is that, you know, we give it a conditional preliminary approval based on them getting the right of way, them doing the proper water maintenance, and whatever else we think they need to do. That's, I, I agree with you, Steve. I think that's what we got to do. I, I'm just confused why they wouldn't, you know?
Okay, what else you got on the list, Skip? We've got the 44, we've got the right of way, right?
John commented that it might be great if they remove more surface parking. I don't know that we voted on that per se or had much discussion pro or con, but that's an issue I wrote down.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of that, actually. I don't know anybody else, but.
I would be in favor of that too.
So why don't you just?
Okay. Okay.
Can we? Maybe? Can we just say we're referring this to the board of commissioners because we can't continue it, but without any recommendation, yes or no? And just say that these are the issues that we, that we find that they're particularly difficult?
Well, I, yeah, we can, we can do all that. The important thing, honestly, are the issues, in my opinion. Because the board of commissioners is going to do what they want to do, they just want to hear our thoughts. Okay? So we're spending a lot of time on the issues and then we'll just decide amongst ourselves, we'll take a straw vote, whether we're going to vote yea or nay, but the issues go along with the vote.
So I'll recap the issues, because I think we've got it down to maybe four, but somebody can jump in. They must get the right of way on the PennDOT and school side for this development. The stormwater information has to be completed and infiltration tests have to be supplied to the township, which have not been done so far. I think we still said we wanted to see more about underground parking, safety and fire. Did I say something?
Nope.
Oh, okay. And we would like to see more surface parking removed. We still have a concern about traffic, but I think that the right of way and we're not in a position to evaluate these traffic safety measures and, not safety measures, the devices that, whatever they are, you know, we're getting tired now.
Any additional things we want to add?
My own thought is that I think, you know, getting the right of way is an important piece of it, but I think that that's just one element of the overall traffic issue as being, I think that's the thing we need to say to the board of commissioners, traffic is our concern. A subsection of that is getting these rights of ways so that that can address at least some of the things, but that is not, just getting that, it's not necessarily going to resolve all the traffic use around us, at least with their.
I don't think we're really going to resolve. This is going to be developed one way or another, and they have a right to do that. I'm not disagreeing with you on that. However, there are many things that could be done to make the impact a little less so that we don't go to a Z traffic level, if they have such a thing. But, and I think part of that is require them to get the, these things. But, you know, we're not going to solve anything tonight, they won't continue it, so let's just take a vote and give them our list of things one way or the other.
Okay. One way we could do this is, I think Peter, since we have so, the issues are deeper, I mean, if we write a, it'll take us, you know, a while to write the resolution with every nuance factor. Maybe a better way of doing this is to say, we have a concern about the. Maybe a better way of doing this is to say, "We have a concern about the right-of-way acquisition. We have a concern about stormwater, specifically infiltration." Jump in and correct me, anybody who wants to. "We have a concern about the design of the underground parking, particularly the safety and fire aspect. We have a concern about traffic generation from this project, and we want the Commissioners to pay special attention to that. And we would like to see the applicant remove more surface parking and actually put it in this, hopefully, safe underground garage." Without increasing any additional construction. But do we also want to say that we consider that this kind of development is consistent with the plan and so forth?
It's not necessary. Okay, so I need a recommendation.
A motion.
A motion, sorry. And if... I will, no one else will.
I move that. I'll make a motion.
What's the motion?
I move that we accept the preliminary plan.
Mike Charlie? Sorry. I move that we accept the preliminary plan based on the points... Approve the preliminary plan based on the points that are generated, whatever they were.
The conditions to be set forth in a memorandum by Peter, because there's depth to that. I mean, in other words, to try to write every edge of that in, I don't think is helpful in the resolution, unless you want us to do that.
No. I mean, Sue will have the minutes. They can watch the video of this. You know, I think the... I don't think you need to go way deep.
Okay. We'll do it this way. We recommend approval or denial. The points we want to touch on are...
Well, we've got a motion.
You got that. We have a motion. We have a motion to recommend approval based on... Please read your points, Skip.
That's what I was about to...
And then we'll vote on it. That applicant must secure the right-of-way necessary for the traffic construction proposed. That the stormwater issues, particularly infiltration, have to completely satisfy staff. That the underground parking structure meets code and is safe and fire-safe. That traffic issues are a primary concern of the Commission, and we hope that the board addresses that when they vote to approve or deny. And that the applicant remove more surface parking. That we recommend that the applicant remove more surface parking.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. And all in favor?
I did say I didn't want to deny, but I really don't want to do this, but I'm going to vote in favor.
Oh, that would be five in opposed. So the record is so five in favor, two opposed.
And if I could just say, the reason I'm with Skip on not really being against this plan at this point, but I just think we need more time to make it better. And I just took a different direction with it.
Okay. Please let the notes show that. Thank you all. Is the next applicant here?
Thank you very much.
Elizabeth has a prior commitment and needs to leave. We still have a call, so we will continue.
And I'll try to go as quickly. These are zoning matters, I believe, right?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Which one do you have first, Steve?
I've got Bloomingdale.
Bloomingdale?
So next item is the Appeal 2941. Property located at 125 Bloomingdale Avenue in Zone CO. Seek special exception pursuant to Sections 280. No, you're right. He's right. I'm sorry. My bad. Maplewood Avenue is next. Appeal 2932. The applicant, Dave and some Jarian Builders LLC, property located at 415 and 501 Maplewood Avenue.
Use the microphone, please, Nick.
Currently, several lots, and what they're doing, the lots are being merged. Currently, there are two homes on Maplewood here. There is a contractor site here that is pretty much exclusively paved, and there's some other... There's another single... Or there's another lot that has been acquired. It is zoned R5, which permits townhomes. The proposal is for townhomes. The relief is because, as a result, that when you combine these lots, the impervious coverage is...
Thirty-seven point two-two percent.
Thirty-seven point two-two percent. Our proposal that you see here is less than thirty-seven... Or is it exactly thirty-seven point two? It's the same, thirty-seven point two-two, but that does exceed the required of thirty-five percent. So what our contention is, is that we're not increasing the existing impervious coverage, and as a result, we're asking relief from the zoning hearing board on that issue. As you can see, there are 12 townhomes proposed on the site. So the relief has to do with impervious coverage. The relief is being requested by the applicant.
Nick, is it thirty-five or thirty-six? The drawings are very...
Oh, it's thirty-six. I'm sorry. It is thirty-six.
So you're 1.22 off.
That's correct.
You can find that somewhere, Nick, I'm sure. It's got to be there.
Nick, I'm sorry. Give me those two numbers again, please. Thirty-seven point two-two is code...
Currently, it's thirty-seven point two-two. We're proposing thirty-seven point two-two. The requirement is thirty-six.
Right.
The difference is thirty-three. You know what? The existing is thirty-seven point eight-eight percent.
Yeah, I knew it. I thought we were a little less. Yeah.
Thirty-seven point eight-eight, and we're proposing thirty-seven point two-two.
So we are reducing it by a little bit.
We're reducing the impervious coverage as under the proposed...
But you're taking everything down, and you're starting from scratch.
I'm sorry?
You're starting from scratch.
Changing the use.
I mean, you're changing... You're doing everything different. You have to get to thirty-six.
We tried to get to thirty-six percent. We're actually proposing to utilize a lot of the low-impact design elements, brick pavers on the sidewalks, brick pavers in the driveways and different things, but we're only allowed percentages of those particular entities toward the impervious coverages. So we're, you know, we're trying to work within the confines of what are there and still make it, you know, have the same impervious or less. We would do our storm order based upon all of, you know, the impervious coverage that's being proposed. There's currently no stormwater on the site at all.
However, you're starting from scratch. You could reduce...
Actually, Kathy, let me hold. Before we go to this part, I'd like to just... If there's any questions, then I'd like to get the public comment and staff comment, and then we can...
Okay. That's fine.
To that level. Questions from the board, just on the plan?
Yeah, I have a question. I see that... Is that a paper street, Central Avenue?
Yes, it is. It is. It's a street that was never... It's a paper street, yes.
Is that included?
It was proposed, probably about...
Private street.
Private street.
But there's nothing there. I mean, it's not paved. It's not actually a street.
No, it's not a street.
Okay.
The driveway comes down currently down this side here, John.
I see that.
There is a driveway that comes down.
Is the so-called paper street included in the impervious coverage calculation?
Yes.
Yes.
The proposed driveway that we're proposing to build is in... I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry.
The driveway that we're proposing is included in that, as well as the paved area that uses the accesses provided for the DeAntonios in the back of the property now. There's a little driveway that comes up the strip here that's about 15 to 20 feet wide, depending on where, how long there it is. And in the back, there's a substantial amount of paving, and there's a little driveway also between the two existing houses that are on the other side of Maplewood.
You're scraping this site. You're scraping it.
We will be moving all the existing and proposing to put me down, yes.
Is any public?
My question was, even with, you know, basically taking up all the impervious and building these houses and doing the driveway, is that still slightly over? I mean, their point is that, you know... All right, but that's correct. You're just starting, basically, from 100% pervious and then covering it up, and you still get down to thirty-six or thirty-seven point two-two?
No, we're starting at thirty-seven point eight-eight is what it is now, yeah. And then we're going to thirty-seven point two. The requirement's thirty-six. The R5 requirement.
R5, for when you go to multifamily or townhouses, drops to thirty-six. When you have R5 with other types of uses, you're allowed actually 40%.
And I think everyone's familiar with the road. This is Maplewood. This is Highland Avenue. As you go further down Highland Avenue, you run into the series of apartments on the right-hand side. The trails back there, yes.
The trails back there, right?
The PNW, the Philadelphia and Western Railway Company, is the Radnor Trail.
No public comment?
Commission members, I do have some comments on this. I know this is not going to come as a surprise to the applicant, but I'm asking the board at their next meeting to authorize someone from John Rice's office to oppose this application. We've been asking, I don't know if this application's been around since at least January, for some information regarding the ownership of the paper street that's in question. Up until, I guess, just last week, information was dropped off, but we have not really been afforded the time or the opportunity to go through that information. Central Avenue does abut the Radnor Trail, and if the township has ownership of that and has access rights to that, I think it's important that we be given the opportunity to see if the township is interested in that. But before we can get to that, we need to know if, in fact, the township does retain any kind of rights with that paper street. We still have to go through that information that was submitted, but I'm going to formally request that the board, if we come to the conclusion that the township either has access rights and ownership rights to that portion of Central Avenue, or if it's still unclear, that we authorize someone from John Rice's office to oppose the application until such time as that we can get that issue resolved.
Yeah, we have provided that, and Kevin is right. I gave it to him last week. We feel it is clear the township does not have any ownership rights over that paper street, but again, I... Probably Peter's office has not had an opportunity to review that yet. We did provide him with the deeds and with the plans and things of that nature, but I suspect, I believe, I gave it to Kevin on Thursday. So again, I doubt if Peter's office has a chance to reveal it yet.
So if we deny this, and it turns out that the street is not... The township's... Then it's going to come back to us? Is that correct?
No, your recommendation would be what your recommendation is.
So we should review the whole thing, because it's not coming back?
And the ownership issue really isn't in front of you. I mean, what's in front of you is they've presented you a plan with 12 townhomes.
Right.
There are some issues here they need zoning relief on. The question for you is, generally, since this plan's going to come back to you eventually as a land development, do you like it as proposed? If you guys don't like it, you probably should say so, because, you know, if it comes back to you and you guys denied a plan after they got in their zoning relief, you know, we're going in circles. So the purpose here is for you to generally look at the plan, not get into too many details, but rather look at it, say, "Yeah, it works for us," or "No, it doesn't," or, you know, "We don't think you need..." You know, you should get a variance. But to be honest, the ownership issue, you know, is kind of separate and distinct from that recommendation in your review.
Thanks.
Thing I thought of when I looked at the plan was it reminded me of the one at 125 Stratford Avenue, where they want to put in... Not 125, next door to one.
115.
Yeah, 115. Thank you.
Same issue that I'm concerned, that if there's, basically, when you have a paper street and it's not dedicated, it could revert back to property owners on either side and as joining property owner. I want to make sure that that issue... And I agree with Peter. It's related in that if the township does have ownership rights to that, that does have major implications to the plan, which is why I want to get out in front on this issue early.
Well, I could also make the argument that maybe there should be 11 townhomes and not 12. That would help solve the pervious surface issue, right? And I think make it a more pleasing sight, because when I go by 115 Stratford Avenue, if they had put up as many places as they wanted to, it would really look crazy. It's sort of on the edge right now, as a matter of fact.
And that's exactly kind of what I think you should be doing, is that sort of recommendation.
Well, my... Okay. I'll have some observations, but...
Any other thoughts?
No, public is declined to comment, so it's us to comment now. I think we heard from staff, so...
How tall are these? Are these going to be 35 feet, the way a lot of the others?
Whatever the code requirement is on height, is it 35? It is 35.
We saw a plan like this for this site, you know, and we turned it down because...
That was, yeah, several years ago, I remember, I believe, right?
Yep. And it was... The impervious was over, and our chairman at the time said in his presentation that you're changing the use. You don't get to grandfather your existing impervious when you're going from one total use to a totally different use. I think you could knock off a unit, and that would solve a lot of the problems, too.
Well, actually, the height on the plant says 40 feet. That's pretty high for that neighborhood.
A multiple dwellings, yes, is 40 feet. That's code requirement. Remember, that's according to zoning code.
All right. I agree with John that I think there's too many houses on the property. Radnor Township has a stormwater problem, which we're all being taxed for. I don't feel we should add to that. I think we really need to keep things under on the impervious, or at least not allow them to go over. And since they're starting fresh with this, I think they have ample opportunity to handle it on there. And I would agree that the township issue has to be settled before, really, we can take any sort of position.
So someone needs to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry. Just one point, that remember, there is no stormwater management on this site right now, and we're basically... What we're proposing is to take this down to meadow condition and propose stormwater management, as if it was meadow condition.
That's what everybody else has to do, too. So...
No.
So, I mean, let's, you know...
Let's make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll move to reject the plan based on the impervious coverage, the open issue also regarding the Central Avenue and ownership of that, and our belief that there's too many structures on the... Proposed structures on the property.
You're making that recommendation to the zoning hearing board, correct?
That's correct.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Next is Appeal 2941. The applicants, Peter McKenna and Peter Flint, property located at 125 Bloomingdale Avenue, Zone CR. Seek special exception regarding expansion of non-conforming use, parking, front yard setbacks to convert three existing apartments to two... To three condominium units.
This is on... It's on Bloomingdale. It's currently residential zone commercial office, so it's a non-conforming use. As we mentioned here, we're seeking to convert, and let me start out. When we go before the zoning hearing board, we will have to show that we have three permissible non-conforming residential units. That's the first thing we have to show to the zoning hearing board. There has been some discussion of that with the zoning officer, actually, we're meeting the zoning officer tomorrow with the current owners of the property regarding the current uses of the property. Our position is that this was rezoned back in the '50s from a multiple-family residential that was either R6 or R5 at that time, which permitted multiple families. At that time, we had three independent units in there, two rental units on the top, one on the second floor, one on the third floor. First floor was used as a residential unit by the owners. But again, we will have to prove that to the zoning hearing board, that we do have an existing legal nonconformity. And what we're proposing, if we can do that, we're basically slightly expanding that nonconformity by adding some additions that you see on the plan there in the crosshatch area. It is less than 50 percent, as is required by the code, so we will be seeking a special exception for that. It conforms with all the dimensional requirements of the code, conforms with impervious coverage, everything of that nature. And so what we'll be seeking to do, basically, is it would be an ownership change. So instead of three apartments, it would be three condominiums. And as I said, they're small additions to the building. As a result, we're increasing the existing nonconformity by less than 50 percent, which the zoning code requires a special exception. But again, and I know Kevin and I have spoken about this, what we will have to prove to the board and to Kevin is that these were three separate units that predated the change in zoning to the commercial office zoning district.
And your impervious coverage?
We comply. We comply with everything. The only relief being requested is relief from the, I believe it's 101, that we're expanding an existing nonconformity by less than 50 percent. And as a result, we would need a special exception.
Any questions?
What are you after, excuse me, 101?
It's 101, yeah, A2.
101A1.
A2, Charlie, A2, which is the one that if you're expanding an existing nonconformity, you can increase it by more than 50 percent.
And that's also to expand the parking into the front yard setback.
Yes, correct. I'm sorry, I forgot that. There's a special exception also required. You'll notice that along West Wayne Avenue here, here's the front yard setback is where that building footprint line is, although there's no building there, but that's the front yard setback. So 1, 2, 3, about four of those spaces, or three and a half of those spaces would be within the front yard setback, which again, requires a special exception. We have, I believe, that we have to be at least 20 feet from the right-of-way, which we are. And if we're still within the front yard setback, we need a special exception from that, which is 105F of the code, of the zoning code, which states that no parking area shall be located within front yard setbacks unless authorized a special exception by the zoning hearing board in a commercial, commercial office district.
What's on either side, Nick?
Here is Lumberman's down West Wayne Avenue, is a Lumberman's building, which is a big, large office building. And on the other side, is that a dentist, dental office there? Yeah. Yeah, dentist and...
And how about in the front?
Across the street, I know Dr. Bell's...
I guess that would be on West Wayne Avenue, right, that little square there?
West Wayne here, this is an office building here.
Okay.
Right here. It's a psychologist's office.
That's pretty much surrounded by commercial.
Yeah. Psychologist's office here. I believe, is it dental? I thought there may be some residential in that dental office. No, it's all dental? Okay. And then across the street, as you may be aware, that is zoned R5, but there is a doctor's, an optometrist's office, I believe, there, Newman Saunders Galleries over there, and then I think you guys are familiar with some proposed developments going on over there, too.
Any additional board questions at this time?
Any issue with the turning radius and the fire trucks and all that? Has that been explored?
Again, this is going to come back to you guys. That's why it's here. Anything that comes, that's before you, before it goes to zoning, comes back to you.
Now, is all the, all that paving is new?
Pardon?
All that paving is new, or just the...
Yes, all that paving's new. There was something here previously, I believe. There's some remnants of something there, is my understanding. But if you look at it now, it looks green.
I'm okay with it, because the surrounding area is all...
I was going to just go questions first, no comments. And then I was going to let the public...
I take it back, then.
Okay, yeah, withdraw that. Any public comment?
My wife and I own the property right about there, across the street. I'm not going to speak to some of the things Nick spoke to, as he said he has to prove those at zoning, and I haven't actually been involved in those. The two things I want to speak on were the special exception to the parking and the impervious. So I'll try and be as brief as I can, because I know it's already very late. And if you look at the numbers here for the lot area, which is at 26920, they use those numbers for both building area and impervious. And for the impervious, they need to exclude the right-of-way. It's very similar to the way PLO was for Biomed. So when you, this area right here is not subtracted off. If you subtract that off, that's about, that's 2550 square feet, it's 85 by 30, the right-of-way there, which takes the lot area net of the right-of-way, which is what the impervious is calculated on, or more technically, what the landscape area is calculated on, is 24370, which would leave 50 percent of impervious at 12,185 square feet. And what they're proposing is 12,599. So they'd be about, they're 414 over the impervious, based upon that calculation. I'm going to show some other things where that will come into play also, but, and keep in mind that, so 414 right now is what they're over. The other things with the plan here, this is the one-way street, or, excuse me, one-way drive, which is 11 feet wide, and obviously, the Saldo Code requires 12, as we've heard before.
Baron, just to focus this, because of the hour...
Sure.
This is only going in front of the zoning hearing board. We're only talking about the variances they're requesting. They're going to have to come, you know, from a land development standpoint, this makes sense, but like Saldo, I mean...
I only bring them up because they relate to the impervious, in saying they're already, and if you'll grant me like two minutes, I'll pull that together.
But what I'm saying is they're not requesting a variance to the impervious.
The, I've been informed that these numbers are all net numbers. He already excluded it out, both for building area...
Actually, you're right, let's...
That's not what we're asking, we're not asking completely...
Yeah, I know that. And so to Peter's comment, let's talk specifically on those items. So impervious coverage is not part of the conversation tonight?
It is, in far as my objection, so please let me continue on with that.
Make it quick, please.
Yeah. And by the way, I did do the calculations, and if you...
Please make it quick. Get to your objection.
I understand. Please let me, okay. I'm not addressing them. I'm saying, I did the calculations, the, if you do, the 26920 is including that whole area. I did the measurements, so, just for clarification. So in relation to impervious, part of what they would need, they're already below code on the Saldo for that, with 11 versus 12. Here, it's 22 versus 25. So what I'm saying in general, and I'll, I have a couple pictures real quick, and again, I will be brief, is this configuration with the drive and the parking, I don't think really fits here. Because number one, they could fit all the parking within the front yard setback. They could put a parking space there, they could put it there, and quite frankly, eliminate this drive. And I'll show you, I'll show you a quick reason why I think that would be appropriate, and then I'll just finish up. Yeah, thanks if you can, Jim, if you're back there, if you can zoom in, or whoever's back there. This, here's the, this is the drive of the, of the next door, and this is where the proposed drive would be. And you see these very large trees here. And I'll show you some close-up real quick about how they would be impacted. So my gist of my argument is, this particular configuration, they're already over impervious, I think the Bloomingdale driveway should be eliminated and just do the two-way, as they already have indicated on West Wayne, so that number one, we can save these trees, and number two, they'll be under our impervious. So let me just flip these and be out of here. You can start to see, here's the trees, here's the difference where they're going to put the drive. These trees would, these large trees would end up being on very, you know, almost like a parking island, so to speak. Whereas here's the West Wayne side, and you can see, here's the existing curb cut, and it's pretty empty there. And so that's why I'm saying that on, that the parking can go here, and they can just increase this and standard the impervious, and just do away with that. So my point being is, based upon that, I would ask for you to recommend denial of this particular plan to zoning hearing board. I'm not against the concept, just because I believe they're over impervious, and they can fit on the, outside the front yard, all the parking they need. Plus, it'll help save those trees, which are an important part of the scenic part of Bloomingdale. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Commission members, I can just comment real quickly on the impervious issue. That is not something that the applicant has requested. If, in fact, they need relief from impervious, they will be back in front of you, because they'd have to be reapplied to the zoning hearing board. So the issues that are going in front of the zoning hearing board are the special exception for the expansion of the nonconforming use and for the parking in the front yard setback. Impervious is, at this point, not on the table. If it becomes something that is on the table in the future, and they need relief, they will be back with another application to the zoning hearing board, which means they'll be back in front of you.
Thank you.
Actually, could I just, as Nick is prone to do and did in this case, he includes the catch-all, which is applicant seeks further any other zoning or alternative relief required necessary for the plan. So that, he, if something comes up, technically, that's already covered, and I think Charlie and Kathy could speak to that.
I have no idea what he just said, so...
We're not going to ask for any impervious coverage relief, right?
Okay.
That is remnants from prior board president, and they still feel the same way about it, prior board members, I should say. And their position on that has not changed, that you generally don't ask for variance on impervious coverage.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the board, or questions of staff? Comments from staff at all? Any comments, other than what you said?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Can I put my statement out there again? I just won't say it again, but you know my thoughts. I'm in favor, I think, I don't see anything wrong with the plan. It's going to come back to us. We can tweak impervious or anything else then. But generally, I don't see an issue with recommending approval by the zoning board. Charlie, you agree?
Yeah, I agree. I think that if the zoning board sees a different alternative relative to where the parking should be, and I'm sure he's going to show up at the zoning board meeting and tell them, they'll figure it out.
Any other comments? Somebody like to make a motion?
I mean, I do like the idea of not having to take down a tree, so to think coming out onto, what's the name, Bloomingdale. And I think that we ought to at least make note of that. If we're going to approve this, we ought to make note that that's something we would...
It's going to come back to us, though.
If they're more than 36-inch caliber, they're going to go in front of Shade Tree, and Shade Tree's going to not give them a whole lot of fun.
Did someone want to make a motion?
I'll move that we recommend approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Denied. Denied. Okay, so it'll be three to two for approval. And that concludes that application. I can't count, sorry. It was four to two for approval. Sorry.
Thank you.
Two denials. I approved. You and, we're against. Yeah. You two and John and I voted for. Okay, good. Any general public comment? Any old business? New business? We're adjourned. I guess I'm supposed to vote for that, but...